Wednesday, October five, twenty twenty-two. Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson has been excused. Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Bokey has not arrived. Councilmember Bran Seder?
Here.
Councilmember Farmer?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss?
Here.
And Mayor Whalen?
Present.
You have a form.
Thank you very much. And just for the benefit of those who are watching us eat, sorry about that. Because of the early timeframe of the meeting, it was the council's preference to at least get here early to get staff in and out early and still have the opportunity to get somebody to eat, so we didn't have to go home first. So we will proceed with the regular agenda. New business includes the review of the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four proposed biennial budget, department presentations, and we understand this is going to go over a few days. But tonight, we start with a portion of the budget pertaining to council, city council area, city manager area, parks, recreation, and community services, the police department, and last but not least, the legal department. So to start us, we have our assistant city manager, Michael Vargas, who will lead us through the city council portion of the proposed budget.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Michael Vargas here to go over the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four proposed biennial budget for the city council and the city manager department. And I would like to start off with the city council operating budget, which can be found on the budget document at section three, operating budget, page three. So, to begin, we have the organizational structure of the city council, which the city council represents the citizens of Lakewood, and also includes other important duties such as adopting ordinances and resolutions, establishing policies, and employing the city manager to run the city government consistent with city policies and goals. The city council also deploys a variety of committees, boards, and commissions to address policy issues in a number of areas. That include the arts, landmarks and heritage, parks and recreation, public safety, and the youth. So I will now go on to page seven here. So the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two accomplishments of the city council are listed here. I'll go over a few important ones. So the city council implemented the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four city council goals and strategic plan, continued to act in a leadership capacity at the federal, state, and regional level, made measurable strides in public safety, such as committing ARPA funds to the city's first body worn camera program, continued to advocate for equitable distribution of adult family homes across the state, created a tree advisory committee to develop fair tree removal mitigation and maintenance code, adopted a new energy and climate change chapter to the comprehensive plan to address key environmental issues in the city, and the city council allocated seven point two million, or just over half of the total ARPA funds, at about thirteen point seven million that the city received through an equitable and transparent process to key community projects and programs in areas such as homelessness, education, equity, and housing. And finally, the city council affirmed the city's commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion through incorporation of DEI into the city council goals, as well as passing resolutions adopting a citywide statement on equity and land acknowledgement. So moving on to the next page here, we have the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four anticipated key accomplishments of the city council, which include, I'll name a few here. The city council will adopt ordinances and regulations that align with the priorities identified in the city council goals. So I'll name them here quickly. They are economic development, dependable infrastructure, public safety, fiscal responsibility, transparency, and a robust and active community. The city council will also continue to support creative criminal justice alternative diversion programs, continue to take a proactive role in legislative advocacy, particularly in matters of public safety and housing. And finally, the city council in twenty twenty-four will develop and adopt city council goals for twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-eight, AKA the next two bienniums. The following pages on the budget document list the city council goals and objectives, as well as department functions, but I would like to please turn our attention to the position inventory and performance measures, specifically the performance measures for the city council here, which include number of city council retreats and number of city council sponsored slash supported events, which year to date, this year, we have done eleven. We have listed previous year ends there, but twenty twenty-one ending in twenty-one events, which is quite a rebound from our low in twenty twenty, of course. And we have the events listed below. So moving on to the next page here, we have the purpose and description on city council, which I would just like to reiterate that the council has twelve working committees, boards, and commissions, with the newest one being the tree advisory committee that was convened this year. And finally, following page, we have financial information for the city council. So the proposed operating budget totals one hundred and sixty thousand dollars in twenty twenty-three, and again, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars in twenty twenty-four. Highlights of the twenty twenty-three proposed budget compared to the twenty twenty-two adjusted budget include the following: we saw an increase in under travel and training due to AWC annual conference costs for two attendees. We also saw an increase under other services and charges, and this was due to the youth council summit. So the success of the event this year is expected to drive a larger, more detailed event next time around, and funds will be used for space rental, transportation, supplies, and professional services. And I would like to turn to the budget detail for the city council. That's on section seven, budget detail, page three, your budget document.
Let me get to it.
Yeah.
Tab seven?
Section seven, page three.
Looking over the financial chart on page thirteen. I just want to take a look at it for a second.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the travel and training, the eighty-nine hundred dollar figure for year end twenty twenty-two. I can't think of much, if any, travel that was done by the council this past year, or much by way of training, so was that the AWC Dharma? Is that what those figures stand for?
I do not know the answer to that question. Want me to follow up with you?
Yeah, I would like to get a follow up on that, just so I know we spent money on, because I don't recall any.
So the the year end estimate is equal to what was budgeted that allows for the city council with some flexibility, should there be some additional training at the end of this year, or sometime throughout the year, or other programs within your budget? But the travel and training budget for twenty-three and twenty-four is consistent with prior year's budget with the addition of budgeting for two attendees at the AWC conference.
But I guess my question is, did we spend any of that money that was allocated in the original budget?
I'll turn to Brianna. For this year.
Other than AWC. Right, but it wasn't nine thousand dollars worth, is what I'm saying.
Right, and what I'm saying is your adjusted budget and your year end estimates are the same for now, and that allows you some flexibility.
Got it.
There are some other areas that you would be interested in, whether it be the conference or other expenditures.
Travel to Washington, DC. But yeah.
Yeah, you'll see that in
But we're anticipated in the next biennium. That some of the discussions around reinvigorating the post-COVID relationships with sister cities, there is sort of an expectation that the mayor was, the deputy mayor would travel to Kim Hay, while they were their mayor. They don't have a deputy mayor, they have a council chair would travel here. And so I would think that there's travel associated with that that we should anticipate in the next biennium.
Section seven, budget detail, page four, and that's your tab seven.
Yeah, so looking at the budget detail for the city council, the ongoing budget, we see the youth summit red line here, it's probably the most prominent change, and that includes ten thousand, ten thousand dollars in twenty twenty-three, and ten thousand dollars in twenty twenty-four as we continue to do that event. And at this point, I would like to stop before moving on to the city manager department budget, invite any questions and comments from the council at this time.
The anticipated two attendees for AWC is based on sort of past history, right? Not necessarily what may happen this year? I would take a look at the line item for the Community Connector event, based upon what we've just got a receipt for this year. That may be a little low. Okay.
Go ahead. All right, moving on to the city manager proposed budget. That is found on section three, operating budget, page fifteen, your budget document there. I would like to note that I will be going over all things related to the city manager proper within this budget. I will then, after questions and comments from the council, I will turn it over to our communications manager, Ms. Bryn Grimley, to go over all things communication and DEI under the city manager department. So to begin, page seventeen, we have the organizational structure of the city manager department, which of course has the city manager, whose primary duties include implementing city council goals and policies, lead all city departments to provide efficient delivery of services, and create strategy for intergovernmental relations. We also have policy support for the city manager and the communications, which includes communications manager, as well as a new and currently vacant communications coordinator to provide communication support. Moving on to the next page, we have the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two accomplishments of the city manager department, which I will go over a few key accomplishments here. The city manager implemented twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four city council goals and objectives, developed and implemented federal, state, and county legislative agendas and policy manuals, organized and held spring and fall community cleanup events, secured sixty-eight thousand dollars from the Washington State Office of Public Defense to continue to fund critical sports services for the city's public defenders, administered the twenty twenty-two National Community Survey and performed results analysis with an equity focus, and finally, continue to work with the Pierce County Library System to facilitate the construction of two new libraries to replace the old ones in downtown Intellucum neighborhoods. The following page contains the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four anticipated key projects for the city manager, which includes completing a city strategic plan update for twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. City manager will serve in a leadership capacity in federal, regional, and local affairs, develop and advocate the city's federal, state, and county legislative agenda and policy manuals, and finally, continue the relationship with Nisqually Indian Tribe in key policy areas that include improving for Stilligun Park. The following pages in the budget document, again, contain the city council goals and objectives, as well as department functions. But if we could please turn our to the service and program changes portion. A lot of these items pertain to communications and DEI, although I would like to turn your attention to the final item here, which is twenty thousand dollars in twenty twenty-three for the National Community Survey. It's at the very end of this section here. So this proposed document, this proposed budget includes twenty thousand dollars, which would allow us to survey sixty-five hundred households in twenty twenty-four. That is a five thousand dollar increase from the fifteen thousand dollars we spent to survey twenty-seven hundred households in twenty twenty-two. So that is about more than double our sample size, which all things equal should translate to more responses as well. The following page on the budget document contains position inventory and performance measures, as well as purpose and description for the city manager. Although I'd like to please turn to our financial information for the city manager department. So the proposed operating budget totals nine hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in twenty twenty-three, and nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars in twenty twenty-four. The twenty twenty-three proposed budget is a fifteen point seven percent, or one hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar increase from the twenty twenty-two adjusted budget. Highlights of the twenty twenty-three budget, proposed budget compared to the twenty twenty-two adjusted budget are as follows. Under travel and training, we saw an increase in costs due to two attendees for the ICMA, WCMA, and AWC annual conferences under internal service and MMO charges, saw an increase due to added WCIA assessment increase. And again, under the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four programs, we have the National Community Survey as a one-time expense. That leads us to the budget detail for the city manager office under section seven, budget detail, page five.
Yeah. Hold on, let us get there.
Yeah. Yeah.
I was more amused that we're subscribing to the Seattle Times and not the Tacoma News Tribune, probably because of the oh, I was gonna say because of the available news contained, but anyway.
Communications now, before you want us to go into that, and then you can ask questions about
Absolutely, yeah. So which tab do you want us to go to?
So why don't you go ahead?
Operating budget, page twenty-two.
Got it.
Section three.
Twenty-two. Yep.
And council members, you know, regarding the detail tab, what you're, what Bryn will cover is going to be contained in the budget detail. What she'll give you is the overview of what programs have been approved or what have by the city manager as a recommendation.
Got it.
So it would be a repeat to look at the budget detail if you, if she gives that presentation.
Thank you for the explanatory note.
And to keep things simple, I will stick on the operating budget page only. I won't jump to budget detail. So we're going to be on section three, operating budget, page twenty-two, where it says service program, service slash program changes. Yep.
I have a technical question for Ms. Kraus. So when we go into budget detail, and we're, inevitably, we'll get hung up in some of the detail because it's very detailed, down to subscriptions, right? But in reality, when we approve a budget, what are we approving, at what level are we approving the budget?
Thank you for your question. So really, as the departments present their budget, what they're presenting to you is the budget with the city manager's proposed recommendations. The detail is what gets the departments, it itemizes for the departments, but really what you're approving is the program itself. We'll take care of the dollar portion of it to, so like when Bryn covers hers, she's got a position in there. We'll handle the details of the position. We give you the dollar amount of what that changes.
So
City manager is going, that's additional.
Councilmember Bokey, the answer is at the fund level.
At the fund level. So we're approving a line item for communications. We're not, we're not telling you, we're not holding you to you spent two hundred and fifty dollars on internet rather than it was supposed to be two hundred and forty-eight dollars. I just want to clear this up, so we
Yeah, you're absolutely correct. It is at the fund level, as the city manager stated. The departments are presenting their section of the fund. So from a legal standpoint, from a fund level, departments can spend within their authorized amount as proposed. However, if they go above that, city manager also has the authority to allow it to go into other departments. So for example, if I have budgetary savings and communications needs more, then that's something that the city manager can approve within the fund. Once we cross funds, then it goes back to the city council for approval. The budget detail is really provided for transparency. It's also a tool for the department, so when they look at their line item budget, they can be reminded of, oh, this is where I put the money, and this is the appropriate place to charge it when we come into the actual expenditures.
Okay, thank you.
Because in reality, the whole thing is the manager's proposal to achieve council's goals and objectives, not by the subscription detail that I was teasing you with.
Absolutely correct, yes.
Please.
And so we'll start with section three, operating budget, page twenty-two, service program changes. So as you can see, many of the changes, or I should say additions, to the city manager's budget really align with the communication goals of the city. And I'll just note that prior, when I was with the city from two thousand seventeen to about mid-two thousand twenty, I did not have a budget, so I largely existed within the LTAC grant. That was really if I wanted to buy an ad for a magazine, if I wanted to do a Facebook buy, that was with the LTAC monies. I was really dependent on what I was allocated from them. I didn't have the ability to use a budget within our budget. So I am very excited to be able to bring forward an opportunity to just show basically how we've grown as a city. Our communications have grown just significantly, and I think that's really a reflection of the work that the city council's been putting in. Obviously, you know, the goal of transparency, our residents expect us to communicate at a certain level, and we're achieving that, but we need to have the tools in place to be able to do that. So the first thing, obviously, you'll notice related to communications is the coordinator, the communications coordinator position. This is a new position that has been approved to have, and that will provide me support, because currently I'm a one-person division. I'm not even a department. I'm a one-person, I'm a one-stop shop. And while we've been doing a great job, it's great to have another person to be able to help with that, and frankly, have a team to brainstorm ideas with, to bounce ideas off of, and have that support. So that's one of the proposals. The other ones, obviously, the subscriptions, and in addition to our local news outlet subscriptions, there's some additional services here that are actually really conducive to creating efficiencies within communications. So the Canvas subscription, that's an online tool that allows us to create graphics and have just an unlimited allocation of, you know, templates even to use, which really makes things a lot quicker and easier. So if you've been looking at our social media that we've been doing, a lot of those images, those graphics that you see that aren't the photographs are items that I've been making to help promote council meetings, to help promote proclamations, to promote our Truck and Tractor Day, our events, and it makes it really easy for us to just hop in there and do that. The other one is Sprout Social, which is basically a social media management tool, and it allows me to schedule out our social media posts. Literally, I could do it until like ten years down the road kind of thing. I mean, it's great. It's really wonderful. It allows for social media planning. I have a calendar that I use. It allows me to schedule to multiple all of our accounts. So instead of before, when I was here, I would have to go into Facebook. I would have to do Instagram off of my phone, because Instagram wasn't, at the time, wasn't allowing you to schedule it through a desktop app. I would have to do Twitter, and so everything different. This, I can do it all from the same spot, and it, it's, I mean, it still takes a lot of time to do this, but this definitely really speeds up that process. And then also the Adobe Creative Cloud, that's something that we've actually had. So we've had access to the Adobe suite, which again allows us for larger layout projects for templates for things like brochures, or for example, if we were to do like an executive summary, that would be a way for us to have a design to do that. Onto page twenty-three, you'll just see the listing of different things, kind of miscellaneous for digital equipment items, you know, whether we have a camera that needs to be repaired, or the purchase of additional equipment to help us continue with our visual elements, and then professional services. So this is something, you know, hiring professional photography to help with certain events, as well as videography services, where we might be able to storyboard some larger video scale project videos to help at that professional level that would align with getting the cities messaging out about our priorities. We've added the fourth edition for the Connections magazine, so we will really truly be a quarterly publication. And then you'll also see the special events advertising, so that's one that we previously have not budgeted for. And this again would allow for things like when we're promoting Summerfest, buying a billboard, for example, and promoting it that way, doing advertising and publications, social media advertising, Google Ads, just the general marketing things that you need money to be able to buy and get your placement out there. And then another one that I'm excited about is having the proposal for the Build Your Better Here campaign. That's something that we initiated back when I was here before, and it actually, even though it kind of went quiet on our end a little bit during the pandemic and the transition of communication managers, it's actually been performing quite well, even without us putting a lot of time and energy into it. So the idea is to continue to follow it down the path in which it's organically going at this point, which is really working on bringing people to consider moving into Lakewood, doing their businesses here. So doing that in concert with our nearcation promotion that has currently been proposed by the LTAC committee to receive funding, and that LTAC monies would go toward that, and we'd also be working on the Build Your Better Here campaign for the more, here's why you should come live in Lakewood and have your business here. I see Councilmember Bokey has a question.
Yeah, I'm trying to formulate the question, my little head, or my big head, but you know. We've done Build Your Better, and now you're saying we kind of, with COVID, it kind of went to the side. So we haven't been spending money, or is this additional money to this? And then how do you, when it's specific to business, remind me how we, how we are, or what's your change in strategy towards communicating with business?
Sure, so I'll answer your second question first. I don't, so just a quick refresher, Build Your Better Here created different personas for us to tackle, if you will, and that included, you know, families, then long timers, as well as businesses, entrepreneurs, right? Start your business here, relocate here, have a satellite office here. So those, the website has remained operational, so we have been contributing to the website maintenance, the purchase of the domain, kind of more of that perfunctory stuff to just keep it going, but we have not been doing the larger scale media. We did videos, so we did do those, but we haven't done anything this year toward it, beyond what we already had in place with the, we did do some promotions, I believe it was in two thousand twenty-one, videos of the parks and complimenting some of the events that we were having. But the focus is But the focus is continuing to tie back to our website, continuing to tie to our Economic Development Manager, the work she's doing. So that would be, we would just basically continue to elevate that and probably put a little bit more attention to that, which we kind of, I don't want to say fell off of, but just didn't push so much.
Mr. Brandon Stetter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On that same program, on the Build Your Better program, in the description, it speaks to a low, mid, and high-level program, and then the budget for both years of the biennium are at the low level. What's the difference between low, mid, and high? And why would we anticipate staying low the entire biennium?
Sure, those are great questions. So the low, medium, or mid and high level are what was proposed to us by the marketing firm that we're working with on that. So Hemisphere came forward with a rough kind of high-level quote as to, okay, if you want this, this, and this, it will cost approximately this much. If you want this, this, and this, plus this, and they gave us packages basically of what services you would get for those costs. So the low end at this time meets the needs that we have. It's in line with what we have in place and kind of how we want to move things forward. So I think at this point in time, that's an appropriate level for what we're wanting to get from it.
So what are some of the things in the mid and high that we're foregoing based on not thinking we need?
That's a really good question, and I will have to look at the proposal again because it's been a little bit since I looked at it, but I can get back to you with, you know, here's a breakdown of what's proposed.
And if I could ask on another program, the National Citizen Survey, so intend to. I thought I heard in the original presentation that we were going to look to do it in 2024 again. And on page 23, it's budgeted for 2023. So, and so is that we pay for it upfront, or how is that?
Yes, Councilmember Brandon Stetter. Similarly to how we did the 2022 survey, we will contract, you know, get the contract executed in 2023, pay for it, and then conduct the survey in 2024 to keep in the two-year sort of rhythm we established in 2015. So we survey every biennium essentially. So the cost would be bore out in 23, survey conducted in 24, similarly to how we did it this year.
So it's, but the biennium number is what is what's reflected, even if it blends across in both years. I guess that I would say when we received the citizen survey report this year earlier, and it was the third year that we had done it. And I think that this year we got a bit more analysis of the report when it was done to us. But from our discussions and the analysis, it was an activity that didn't lead us to, the findings of the report didn't lead us to any actionable item. And we discussed that as an option to just doing it again, that we could look for a different tool to survey the community to do that, recognizing that the first time we used a different tool, it would be creating a new baseline, rather than having something that could just go look back and what we were going to go and do that. So my question would be, is if we decided we wanted to end the sequence of this report and wanted to go to develop a tool that might bring us information that's actually actionable for things to do that, how much money would we need in the budget for that? As opposed to just replicate what we've done before, but that, well, honestly, I haven't ever seen that being the cause of anything that's brought forward as a change to do that. But I'd also anticipate that to start something new, either with a new vendor or get someone to help us develop something unique will cost more than just doing it over again. And I would suggest that maybe we want to consider, consider doing that as a thing is that 2024 is going to bring us to the the verge of when we want our vision to sort of become manifest. It still goes a little beyond into 2025, but you know, I think maybe the money spent on this survey the last three times, without it really helping us to make change, is a sunk cost. And we should still survey the community, find things that we think are important. But then maybe we should invest whatever dollars it takes for a tool that will be more productive.
Certainly don't disagree. That's probably an item we can think about. You know, maybe the dollars are a placeholder. It doesn't necessarily have to be the particular organization that's doing the work. And it may end up being in 24 as opposed to 23. But it might be worth investigating, is what I hear you say, what the cost might be for a more robust tool that actually provides more and better data.
And again, I like to look if it's going to be a placeholder like that, maybe a bigger dollar placeholder.
That's good feedback. Helpful. And then I think Councilmember Bill had a question, and then I'm going to encourage us, since we're getting on this roll of flipping the book, I think it's an absolutely fine thing to go to the detail on tab seven when you're ready. Because it does, now that we're cluing into how this process is going to work for the year, does show us cleanly in the red line changes. The changes that we see in Section 3, which are the program changes that staff is identifying for us, vis a vis the overall budget for that department in the detail. So when you're ready, we'll go to that after Councilmember Bill has your question.
Yeah, actually, looking here, answered one of my questions. I wondered about possible training and furthering your guys' education through conferences, things like that. So I see one conference on there, but I wondered about, you know, continuing education, something like that in that field, I think, would be really good. And so that is one of my questions. Something like that could be taking a look at. And then I know it's only, I know it's Canva. Do you just use it for ease? Because you can use Spark, you have Adobe, you have the full suite, so.
Yeah, a lot of it is, it's just, excuse me, it's just simpler with the automatic ability to immediately change the sizing, right? From a Facebook graphic to an Instagram to a Twitter.
Have you used Spark?
I haven't. No, that's not one I've used. I was using Canva at my previous job. And it was, and also the ability to, and I would presume Sparks is the way too. The teams where you can have multiple people and share documents that way. But yeah, Canva is just one that I'm familiar with, and it was one that was in place when I came back here. So I just think it's good to maintain because all our stuff's already there. But I certainly could take a look at.
No, it's just odd to me because if you're already working in the Adobe platform, I would just assume you would stay there because it just, it marries much easier. But if it's easier for Canva, it's easier.
Yeah, I think, you know, for more technical stuff, definitely. And I certainly was using like InDesign previously when I was here, before Canva really was, I don't even know if it was around. If it was, it wasn't as well-known. So I was, you know, using that, and there are needs for it, but I think a lot of it, it's just quicker and easier to pop into Canva.
And then something that might help you also might be like taking a look at Binder. So that's a place to aggregate all of your assets, and it's really easy to share the links and things like that. It's just something that would, with productivity, since you're starting up new, I just, that might be helpful. But I love that the position's there. I do think you need more money for digital equipment, though. That's kind of, yeah, I would, I would say that, but I think that's really good. And under advertisements, it says special events advertising, but it's just advertising in general, correct?
Correct. And I mean, typically, a lot of our advertising has been related to promotion of our events, you know, Summerfest, Farmers Market, and that sort of thing. But yeah, it would, it would run for whatever.
Great. Yep, Mr. Bokey. So, Ms. Grimley, welcome back.
Thank you.
And when I'm looking at this, the changes page in Section 7, you know, I don't think tonight or in our review, we're going to see a department, or whatever you are, have more changes, the red lines than this department. So, and I know we brought up a lot of things about communication, and we said we wanted to keep the the mail, the, you know, the Connections Magazine and various things like that we brought up. But I want to try to get a 5,000-foot view of with all these changes going on, from what we have told you, what we've told the city manager. Where do you see this? What do you see this communications area like going forward? Meaning in two years, kind of what's your, what's your hope? That we make all these changes and so there's that. Are we just making changes so we can say we're doing more? Is there a goal behind it? And two, do you think there's a best practice out there? Like, is there a city that's doing, approximately our size, who is doing this very well compared to us?
What does success look like?
Thank you.
So I would argue, and maybe not argue maybe is the right word. I would say that in fact, what's proposed here really just helps me do what I'm already doing. It's not going to create more work for me. In fact, it's going to make my life easier. I would say that, you know, one thing that I think Lakewood has really excelled at, frankly, is its communications and our connectivity to our residents. We have a really strong back and forth with folks, and we're responsive. And that's something that I really pride us, pride myself on, because I'm typically the one answering all those inquiries because we have a very engaged community, as it relates to social media, I should say. And, you know, I'll field phone calls and whatnot, and I know other staff does as well. So this proposal really just allows me to continue the upward trajectory of what we're doing. And it's, it's stuff we're already doing. It just makes it a lot more efficient. And as far as, you know, two years down the road, so one of my goals in this, you know, will come forward as we work on finalizing the communications strategic plan. You know, I'd really like to frankly professionalize communications here at the city. It's been a position that's always been here, but maybe hasn't necessarily had the attention that it has in recent years. And part of that is because the city has continued to grow, right? And, and our reputation has continued to grow, and we're on the radar. We're a leader in the South Sound, and our communications is also going that direction as well. And so, you know, a goal that I have is to really create a one-stop shop, if you will, for the departments to know, I'm going to go to the communications team because I need a postcard, I need a flyer. I have a report that I'd like to have, you know, really create that unified look. So you know, oh, that's from the city of Lakewood. It's to agree branding, and I hate, you know, because branding, some people can take, can have the wrong connotation, right? But it's really making it clear that when our residents see something, they know it's from the city. Oh, that's a flyer from the city. Oh, that's a postcard about road projects, but it's from the city. So that's my goal, is to make it very clear who we are and what our look is, and how we approach people and how we interact with the public. And I think, you know, a lot of the pieces are there. It's just pulling them together and really, you know, getting everybody on the same page about what that looks like moving forward. And a lot of what's, well, I mean, really pretty much everything that's proposed in here allows for that.
So a thing like Social Sprout, which I've never heard of, right? It's not my area of, look at, she's over there laughing. That helps you, right? It's doing what you're already doing. That would be an example of
Absolutely.
Doing what you're already doing, but hopefully doing it.
And I'll give you an example. So currently, I oversee all of the city's social media except for Lakewood Police. So Lakewood Police have always maintained their own social media. And when I came in prior, I, you know, we sat down and we talked about coordination and doing things, but they definitely have their own audience. And so one of the things I did with Sprout Social is getting them connected to that account as well. So now I have the ability to go in and post if I need to, but always in coordination with them. So for example, when we were doing the the police emphasis, where we did the retail theft emphasis. Well, I created all that stuff, put that together, and then I put it out on the city's social and Lakewood Police social. So that was an instance where I did both, and I could do it all from the Sprout Social application, for lack of a better way to describe it. So I could hit, you know, the city's Instagram, the police Instagram, the city police, or the city's Facebook, the police Facebook, Twitter, all of those, all from one spot, versus having to go into every single one, different passwords, different this or that scheduling. It just allowed me to do it all at one time. So it's just much more efficient.
Yeah, no, I just was about your two-year plan. I would really like to see you guys move towards more innovative ways of getting communication out. I understand that print is great. There's a place for it, there's a place for postcards. But there's so many other ways that I would like to see utilized by the city and to see those things, like the social grow, things like that. And I think Sprout is definitely a great tool, will help a lot. But like, bringing in some of those other tools that will help boost that, I think will be be very beneficial to the city for the communications too.
Absolutely.
Okay, yep.
Mr. Brandon Stetter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the red line of the additional dollars for things to do that, that in part because I don't understand what some of these tools are, being able to go and do that. But what are we investing in that is specifically going to increase our outreach in not outreach to, but feedback from some of the non-native English-speaking elements of our community, which are significant. I'm just trying to see how we're impacting that, and it's, I'm less concerned with, we've been sending things out in multiple languages and being able to go and do that. But I think that our history the past four years has been that we've gotten much less than what we desired back from those communities, okay? So is there, are some of these things going to help with that? Or in your plan, without needing more money, are we going to be able to accomplish that in the next biennium, mid-game, accomplish? It's not something that, a bright line.
Yeah, no, thank you for that question. You know, I think all of these assets are certainly valuable to the overall communication strategy of the city. I think when it comes to targeting those harder-to-reach groups, these would definitely allow for the development of those materials. But ultimately, a lot of it comes down to knowing who those groups are, right? And those individuals, and creating those relationships in the community, and making sure that we're specifically targeting them, however, right? However, they get their information. So all of this would certainly support the development of whatever that might look like. But I think a lot of times it will be case by case, depending on what we're trying to communicate. And then using our existing connections, I'll use our Non-Motorized Transportation Survey, for example. connections, I'll use our non-motorized transportation survey, for example, is, is one that just went live on Monday. Um, so I have a list of different groups, um, and contacts that I'm now going to be sending that to, and we're getting that translated as well. So once those translations are completed, we'll be sending those out as well, asking them to help share it within their networks. So a lot of it too is really relationship-driven as well.
And, and again, my concern is more with the next step of not getting information to them, but of getting information back from them. Um, you know, they just don't wanna stop of pushing, but be having something to listen to, okay? And I'm, I'm sort of open to, to, to hearing what they want, but there isn't much coming our way.
You were, you were here on Monday, weren't you? You're in public comment? We, we got a lot.
Well, y- y- you know, I, I, I'm, I am concerned, Mr. Mayor, whether we're going to hire translators in case someone comes to public comment and wants to speak to us in Nepalese.
Any other questions? Any other thoughts? Did you wanna go to the detail sheets on section seven, or are you good?
I'm happy to, if you guys want to, but I think we've The only other item I just wanted to quickly bring to your attention was just another service program, the diversity, equity and inclusion. We're currently in the process of just effectively evaluating our, our strategies and how we're gonna work that out. So you'll hear more about that soon, but I just wanted to also bring a, attention to that as well, so.
Very good. Well, for my part, I wanna thank you for all the work you've done. When there was a transition this year, there certainly was a concern that we would lose ground, and I don't feel we have, thanks to you. I really appreciate the, the forward push and information about what's on the council agenda, what's going on in the city, as well as the, uh, after-action reviews and reports that go out to the citizens. I think that's really good stuff. The other thing that I remember years ago, and maybe it's still there, it's the button, I want to subscribe to X, Y, or Z. And people used to be able to pay, but they still can't click a box. I wanna receive, uh, council packets or email updates or information about events. Or subscribe to the Connections Magazine. Do we do that still?
Yes, we do. We actually have a page on our website, um, that allows for that. And then typically, uh, I can also add that. So if I'm doing certain posts, like if I do things related to, for example, a road update with ABLM North Access included, I'll refer people to the page where folks can sign up directly on the page to get specific to that road project. So we have different ways in which people can sign up, but yes, we have that on our website.
And so our communication strategy then includes the assembly of that data and like a MailChin database for folks who want X information or Y information, we can target those messages based upon what they want.
Exactly. They can either specify it if they sign up themselves, or if they fill out a form on our website, that goes to me, and then I manually input their information.
Well, i- i- for what it's worth, on the fourth edition of the Connections Magazine, and we talked about this, I don't know, maybe when you were here, or went to the county, but there was a very positive response, at least I get from people touching and feeling uh, something in writing that they get in their mailbox. And so the fact that we're gonna add a quarter, uh, for really relatively nominal increase in cost, I think is a good thing. So thanks for including that. All right. Thank you both. Appreciate it. Mr. Vargas, we don't want you to get too good at your job because someone else might take you. We want the good people to stay here, so, thank you. Uh, you're doing, you're doing great work for us. Thank you.
I think I'm next.
You're next.
Great, thank you. Um, good evening, Council, Mayor and City Council. Uh, I'm gonna stick with section three and I'll let you know which pages I'm on. So as we, as we move through there, so I'm gonna give you kind of an overview of what we're doing and some of the changes and accomplishments. And then when we're done, I'm happy to go to the detail sheets if you need that kind of, uh, if you have questions regarding certain things, so. Um, so let's start on page eighty-seven, section three.
All right.
I'll let you kind of get there. Great. So, thanks for allowing me to share this information with you tonight regarding our work program for Parks, Recreation and Community Services. Our mission's to create a vibrant and healthy community, and we strive to do that every day in the services that we provide for our citizens. We utilize a variety of resources to accomplish this, um, important work, which includes we have full-time staff and part-time staff, seasonal employees, contractors, consultants, and then lots and lots of volunteers. We have a lean organization, but we believe we do an excellent job of implementing our city council goals and strategies, especially in the areas of regional partnership, efficient and responsive service, and being accountable for our work. Our department's broken down into five different main divisions. We have administration, recreation, senior and human services, um, and operations and maintenance. We also manage the parks and, uh, facility CIP programs as well as, uh, part, half, or maybe not quite half, vehicle and fleet. We don't work with the police department, but we manage the other city, uh, equipment and fleet program. We are showing an increase on our FTEs in our budget. Um, that is, besides acknowledging our park CIP staff, which hadn't been shown on the org chart before we've added that, we've also increased supporting a variety of, um, hours for our maintenance and operations program. It's an area that we, um, has been growing, and so we're excited to be able to increase the hours for several part-time staff to make them full-time to help us, um, implement the work program of the council. Our primary purpose is to maintain and improve city infrastructure, to enhance the beauty of Lakewood, create safe places to visit and to extend the life of our city resources and our investments. This is an essential service, and we do this by maximizing use of city resources. We have a policy that says city work with city resources, and what that means to us is that we utilize, um, and so we interact and support all of the different divisions in the city, and then we also um, utilize the expertise and support of other divisions as well. We all work together to, um, get the biggest bang for our citizens' buck and get the work done for council. Our work program's ever increasing and changing, but we're creative and responsive with the resources that are provided to us each year. We're always working to implement the goals and strategies of the city council, the legacy plan. We want to ensure that we're supporting youth, seniors and families. We support our most vulnerable citizens and expand opportunities for the community to gather together. We're looking at our work through an equity lens, um, to be sure that we're really considering the entire community's needs. We do this by looking at data, we're being observant, we watch trends, we listen and, um, talk to the community and then leverage our partnerships, local, regional and state grants, and enable us to accomplish a lot. We're fortunate that Lakewood is such a generous and collaborative community, and that's how we plan to meet our forty-five percent cost recovery goal for Parks and Recreation Services. Hopefully you've had a chance to review, um, our twenty-twenty-one accomplishments. And even during that global pandemic, we've continued to serve our community, to accomplish a lot. In twenty-three and twenty-four, we're gonna strive to maintain the type of performance that we've shown the community and meet expected levels of service. We will, um, enter in this next biennium. We're gonna be promised to be responsive and bold and innovative. We're gonna continue to find new partners and use preventive maintenance and best practices to get our job done. So let's do a quick review of each division and highlight some of the past accomplishments and significant changes and anticipated key projects. So we're gonna start with, um, we're still in section three, page one oh six. That's where we start getting into the details of our various divisions. Um, so page one oh six is administrative services. So this division oversees five city advisory boards. We supervise all the department personnel. We update our policies and our planning doc, documents, and this is where we really work hard to seek partnerships and grants and a variety of resources to support, support our city operations. Um, some of the past accomplishments, and I'll just go back to saying surviving the day-to-day off an hour-to-hour and changes and the craziness that was with COVID, that's, that was really um, on our top of mind for us. We had both internal and external operations that we were supporting. And when the world shut down, our parks didn't. And, um, so although we as a city may have done less organized programs and events for a short period of time, we still had to manage large increases in parks. People were going to the parks. We also managed the city's year-long celebration for our twenty-fifth anniversary. That was something that we brought lots of partners in and worked hard on. And then, of course, just finding and receiving literally millions of dollars in grants, partnerships, sponsorships, donations to support and enhance our parks programs, and, um, we're gonna continue to do that next year. On page one oh eight, we'll feature human services, which manages, manages the city's human services grant program, supports Lakewood's Promise and our community collaboration. It's page one oh eight. In twenty-twenty-one and twenty-two, we focused on community needs as well as being more strategic in the use of our advisory boards. We really combined our youth council, our CSAB and Lakewood's Promise to really take bigger, a bigger picture look at what the community needs were and how we could efficiently utilize all of those different resources to get jobs done. We also funded programs to show a community-wide collaborative impact, and specifically, we did a lot of work in workforce development and the housing and homelessness topic. We offset administrative costs for this division by supporting the choice program where the, the, the city is the fiscal agent for that grant. Um, of course, ARPA projects and facilitated the human services allocation process, providing recommendations for next year, and that'll be coming to council in November. Um, our youth summit was led by this, by the human services staff, and we all know that was a big success. We'll be working on that next year. Some of the key projects will be, uh, for next year under human services, developing and managing contracts and managing the various special programs and grants, gathering data to show the effectiveness of the human service investments in Lakewood, as well as expanding and growing our youth council. I think we're up to twenty-three and a few extras that we're gonna be looking for this next couple of weeks. Um, and then, of course, um, doing the youth summit at the end of the school year this year. On page one hundred and ten, we'll be feature, we feature our recreation services. This division works with a variety of partners to implement out-of-school programs for youth. That's after-school and summer programs, our arts and specialty programs, as well as year-round special events to bring our community together. Um, under recreation, we also manage all of the reservations and special events that happen in the park, not just our city use, but of course, all of the different community use and groups. Twenty-twenty-one accomplishments included drive-in, drive-through and other creative ways to help the community continue to gather and, uh, meeting all of our health and safety guidelines. We managed, uh, summer youth camps and programs, our constantly growing farmer's market, summer concert series, street festivals, and a very wildly successful summer fest program when we brought that back. Twenty-three and twenty-four key projects will include outdoor adventure programs for all ages. We're going to keep expanding our Signal Box art program and our public art program and, um, just continue to do our different community events and activities.
Just, just, so I'm looking on one eleven and we did receive a update on the summer experiences and enrichment for kids, the No Child Left Inside Grants. Are those grants done at the end of this year? And if they are, is that summer experiences that you talked about a replacement for those? And what are we exactly talking about?
So there were a lot of different grants we received this year. The No Child Left Outside program, um, will end at the end of this year. I think our last one is this rocket program we're doing out at, um, Pierce College. We'll do this, you can learn about making rockets and space, and so that's happening, thinking on November. That's our last one for that No Child Left Outside, and then that grant is over. No child left inside, yeah. Uh, we'll go outside, even though the rocket thing is indoors. Um, but anyway, um, I think they go outside to shoot them off. Um, and then we also received the SEEK grant, which was a program, a grant program that we really did an amazing outdoor adventure, and we tied that with a summer camp program, and we received a lot of resources to do that. That program was also very short. It was, um, started, you have to start it by October and be done by the end of the school year. That program's also done, however, it's been replaced with some other outdoor education for all. We're gonna be, we've applied for some grants to do outdoor, a summer spring break outdoor adventure program. We'll continue the day camp program next year in the summer. It may look a little different just because we may not have those grants, but there's, there's still resources coming in, and we take advantage of those as best we can.
Okay, so it's not a one-for-one replacement, but there is some push to replace those, because I think that's really important. I mean, we, we talk about youth a lot and but if, if, at the ground floor, it's rec programs, right? So, I mean, the youth council's twenty-three kids, right? But uh, and they're all high schools, so we need, you know, I'm, I wanna make sure that we're adequately funding and supporting activities for, I guess, elementary through middle school or something in, in getting outside.
Yeah, even if we don't receive any more grants, we still have resources in this budget to do those kinds of activities. We contract with folks for some activities. We are the lead for some activities. We partner with folks. So we're still doing, um, after-school kinds of programs, specialty camps with sports and science and, and then, of course, we will have a summer day camp program. If we receive some grants, we can expand it larger, but we're able to provide that, um, with the budget that you have presented this evening.
So then, for, and I'm not gonna use the proper term, so I'm not even, uh, the county now has kind of taken over the kids with special needs.
Specialized recreation.
Specialized recreation, so do we put funding towards that and then?
Yes.
So Lakewood kids can, can go to those.
Yeah, and they base their program, one of their programs, it's based out of the Lakewood Community Center. We had a really good presentation on that. And so the city is allocating resources to be a partner, and it's based on, um, our percentage of use by Lakewood residents. And so that was a collaboration between Pierce County and Metro Parks, cuz they had the largest programs, and so they consolidated them so that they could save on HR and staffing and facilities. And then they're partnering with all of these different, um, Pierce County facilities, so Edgewood, Milton, Puyallup, everybody's providing re-space to do the programs. And so those individuals can be served. Really important program. And it's a specialty program. So again, sometimes when there's those specialty programs, we may not have the skills or the staff or the expertise to do that, so we contract for those things so that they can still happen. We're still trying to provide a comprehensive list of services in Lakewood. We don't always provide that, but it's provided in the community.
Right. So we put money towards that because it's kind of, everybody has agreed that it should be, okay, thank you.
Yeah. Um, I think, uh, so that was, um, recreation. So if we're ready to move forward, we'll go to page one eleven, that's senior services. Yes, of course.
Quick question, I see in the third bullet down in recreation, page one-ten, talks about the twelve-week farmer's market and various night markets. We haven't really had night markets yet. We were thinking about doing it, like, is it a quarter? Are we gonna try to do that?
Well, what we found was, we were doing farmer's market on Friday, and so to do another one on Saturday was a bit of a challenge. We did do our Saturday festivals, street festivals, and although it wasn't in the dark, it was from four to eight-thirty typically, so that was kind of the night. So we're always trying new and different things, but what we found not summertime, because there's just so many, um, competitive types of activities with festivals and events, but from spring and fall, we still have decent weather is that we can be more effective. Um, but not the day after we've just done a ginormous farmer's market, so.
Still try to do the twenty ones like we've done.
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah.
Perfect.
That's that nimble part we talked about, being creative. Um, page one hundred and eleven, or one-eleven, um, we feature senior services, and of course, this vulnerable population was probably the most heavily impacted last two years. Um, and the temporary loss of our beloved community center really, really impacted those programs. So we've worked hard to stay connected to our current members and implemented virtual and creative ways to keep them engaged. We just had knotty knitters today here at City Hall. Uh, that's a program, and they've made a bazillion puppets for the Christmas tree lighting program. This, the light parade, we'll be handing out these hand puppets. I mean, it's fantastic, so. Just a side note there. Although we don't really see getting back into the community center anytime soon because they really are having some structural issues there. In twenty-three and twenty-four, we're gonna continue, continue to look for new spaces and places to bring our programs back and activities and continue to pro, promote good health and build strong minds and important social connections. That social connection is really important for older adults, helps maintain independence, avoid loneliness, and some of the negative impacts of isolation. So, we, just like we utilize, you know, we're really creative in partnerships, we're really look, gonna be looking for new spaces to do some of our activities so we can expand. But, you know, we're still doing a lot of things here. We do a few things at the police station. Um, we use different.
Thoughts about, uh, partnering with the Y and perhaps using some of the rental resources to maybe help get our seniors over to the Y, cuz it's right across the street, great space.
We're open to all kinds of opportunities. Um, so that would certainly be one of the other places that we would consider, depending on if they were open to having it be open to all citizens. Oftentimes, they're really restricted to their membership base, but, um, we're creative and we'll, we'll be looking at all kinds of spaces.
Mr. Bransdottir.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. It starts with, uh, within the, uh, goal of the department and Parks and Recreation to, uh, generate some revenue, offset costs. We've, what, what are we maintaining as the goal there in terms of the percentage of costs that we want to offset?
Cost recovery is forty-five percent.
And how, what we've been doing with that?
We've been hitting it every single quarter and every, every year. In fact, we've gotten above forty-five percent at some times, and that's really a lot based on, you know, the growth of the farmer's market and summer fest, of course, the more vendors you have, they pay additional money, so there's offsetting that. Lots of sponsorships, that's how we're able to do a lot of the free and reduced programs, low or no-cost programs, because of the sponsorships and the resources. And then some programs, you generate revenue and they create more, they generate more revenue, and that helps offset some of the, the programs that we can provide for our community.
Are there any particular areas that struggle to meet that goal?
Sure, parks. Parks don't generate a lot of revenue, general, our regular parks. Fort Still, Stillicum, of course, is a better cost recovery site, as well as American Lake Boat Launch. But something like Active Park or something like, you know, those places, we, we do shelter rentals there. So those areas typically don't generate enough revenue, but some of the other programs cover it. Senior program used to actually generate well over forty-five percent and used to help offset some, some of the other program costs. So there's cost centers that, I, I don't know about struggle, it just varies. And the last two years have been a bit of a challenge, and so we're bringing a lot of those fee-based programs back in this next program.
But we did, or so far in this current biennium, places where revenue is increased, sort of an offsetting where revenue decreased or never existed in the first.
Yeah, we balance, right, we balance, and we have a pyramid that we use. So those programs that are very individualized, if you're going to take a class, say you're going to do boat making, and you're, it's a very individual program, you're going to pay more than the total cost to run that program, you're going to, there's be more cost recovery. You're going to be coming to a lower no-cost special event and bring your whole family, and it's free. That program's probably not going to generate a lot of money, but we're going to have sponsorships and program support to make sure that it's even Steven. So it varies on the, it's based on the cost recovery pyramid, but we do show that we've hit those marks, correct? Yeah, and so you can see that, I think, on every quarter, every quarter, Mrs. Krause's quarterly financial report, we show the cost recovery for each quarter.
That when a couple bienniums ago, when we embarked upon the building the pavilion, you know, and there was a, there was, there was, there is a business plan
Yep.
for that, that but we've continued to have to upgrade the pavilion to be able to go and do that is is that original business plan, are we still hoping it will be, it'll, it'll, it'll mature into that? It doesn't, it seems like the pavilion has been a very valuable asset in the park, but primarily it's used by the city or in or by groups in, during city events.
So the pavilion we built and then opened it up right before the pandemic. And so it really wasn't used in the manner of the business plan. It didn't grow the way that we had expected to, but, but we weren't spending money either. So part of the cost recovery for the pavilion is to offset the operational costs. So it has been, we did utilize it at, for, for city things. We've also done a few special events and weddings and, of course, concerts and things like that. So we do see that starting to take off now that people are coming back to programs and activities. And so although it, it hasn't met the first five-year mark, because we didn't use it for the first three of the five, we do see that coming forward. And we are looking at that from an operational perspective, fee-based perspective, to make sure that it is meeting those expectations of council. And, and we, we, we hope that that will continue to grow.
And so, you know, the, the budget isn't where we look at it, but are, could we be anticipating when the the fee schedule comes to us, that there's going to be some adjustments in that with respect to parks and recreation?
I'm not sure that we're, well, I'm not sure that we are really looking at changing the fee schedule specifically for the pavilion, but maybe adding an hourly rate versus just the half-day or full-day, so modifying it a little bit. But, but I think that it, it was, the fees were developed based on market rate, and we think it's still good. I mean, we're, we're continuing to do analysis on that, but I don't see major changes to that yet. We really have to have a good couple of years of use to determine, but we will be covering our costs. I mean, we cover the custodian cost, we cover the facility attendant cost, we cover the utility costs with those rates. But we don't really have a good two or three years of data to, to recommend major changes. So I think where we're at right now is okay.
Another biennium that
Yeah.
Help, help, help.
Sure.
I had one, one other thing that I was just trying to understand where it is in the budget. And that is, as we start to add into our inventory of public art, that lights, streets and roads and that, public art sort of seems like it eventually has a maintenance component to it. And I think of the, the Veterans Memorial out here that been a number of years since some of the items in that have been refreshed. It's not, not something that needs repair, but it maybe needs to do that. The Lotus Blossom eventually needs to be recently checked to be able to go and do that. And, and we're, the, the new art installation that we're anticipating putting in is going to be more complicated than, than any of the ones that we've had. And some of our oldest public art things, like the, the Yard at the Sounder Station and those things, just is, is that anticipated being a cost that's going to go to the Public Arts Fund? Or is that somewhere else in the budget, or that someone is, who's taking on the, the role in operations and maintenance of doing maintenance on public art within the city?
Currently, maintenance of our public art is through our ABNO department. We would utilize what skills we need for the type of resource that needs to be supported. If there's something new came online and needed some specialty, we would take it out of maintenance and operations, unless it was specifically requested by the Arts Commission out of their budget, because sometimes they, they have a small budget that they can request use of. But all of the maintenance and operation comes out of the maintenance and operation budget.
And, and in the service and program changes, and I'm looking on page ninety-five of section three, there's a, a section about tree replacement that speaks to forty ornamental trees that are missing dead or damaged. And, and, and I, and I can think of some of those, they're, they're, they're in traffic medians and islands and things, things like that. But elsewhere in that section, when it was going to be funded by another fund, I guess, I, I don't know if that's the right term, but like if swim was going to fund it, or the Public Arts Fund, that would parenthetically show where that money was coming from for, for that. And I was wondering why this isn't going to be funded through the city's tree fund?
Can you tell me which page you're talking about?
I'm on page ninety-five, section three, page ninety-five. And there's a section on tree replacement, and it's thirty-two thousand dollar increase.
Yes.
And I, and I, and I was, you know, in, in other places where the money is coming from someplace other than the general fund, it shows that parenthetically, but and I would have thought that this would be an expense that would come from the tree fund.
So I can take that one. So the Parks Department includes both the general fund and the street fund. The street and general fund are pretty much together, because the general fund subsidizes the street fund. In this case, it, it is accountable in the street fund, but it's being subsidized by the general fund.
So the tree fund is another area that you're going in. If we make that more robust and, and we move forward with an urban forestry program, is that going to be show up on one of these pages of anticipated?
One day it will be there, yes, yes.
That would be under community economic development.
I'm sure at some point I'll be a part of something, but.
Okay.
Well, what? Well, I'll tell you, just to clarify that a little bit, and thank you, thank you, Tom. To clarify that a little bit, what's happened is, is that, you know, the city was very, very active in early cityhood when we were making, developing streets, planting lots of different trees. Over the years, they have died, they've been hit by cars, they've, for some reason or other, been removed and not to, not really replaced. And so this is to really look at one area that has had a real problem, because the trees are dying. They're, they weren't, not the right tree that was planted a zillion years ago. They're pulling up the sidewalks and the road, and so it's to go in and to do, you know, and, and all tree has a life cycle as well. It's to, to solve that problem, so, and put in the right trees in the right spot.
Yeah, well, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm, I am encouraged by the budgets that you've put, put before us in that you know, we constantly hear from citizens that, that parks and, and, and things over there are both something that they value, but that they're also proud of and actually have great recognition of how there have been improvement over the years, okay, of that. And that this budget seems to continue those highly visible improvements that'll, that will be valued by the community.
Thank you. You have a really good team that supports your vision and your goals. They work really hard for the citizens. So I appreciate you saying that. They, they deserve that recognition. To finish up on the operation part, on page one fourteen, we have our O and M budget, our O and M division. This division's broken down into various work groups to include parks, facilities and street operations. Again, as I mentioned earlier, we're adding several hours to part-time and three-quarter time positions to make them full and adding additional resources, which will allow us to be more responses, responsive to an ever-growing work program. We cross-train all of our staff, and so as much as possible, and we're pretty flexible, although folks are really assigned to specific work areas, they really cross over and support each other in so many different ways. Sometimes it's because of just, you know, needing the, the people power. Other times, it might be that they have a special skill or ability that, that is sharing with an area outside their work program. But the work group continues to maintain city infrastructure so that we can maximize its use and extend the life of the city's investments. For the last few years, it's been all hands on deck, as we have used all of our staff and our equipment and our expertise to support so many citywide projects, programs, and especially our special events. Our motto is safe, clean and green, and our priority is to make sure anyone visiting the city, driving on our streets, entering our buildings or using our parks, will have a good first impression of Lakewood, as well as a positive and safe experience. This team manages all the city buildings and work sites. It keeps them clean and operating efficiently. We support our information technology department when they are doing various building upgrades and surveillance projects. Our streets O and M team focuses on right-of-way issues to include pavement and shoulders, vegetation management, stormwater operations, and maintenance of over eight thousand city street signs. It's probably over nine thousand now. Our workforce never stops, and they pick up tons and tons of garbage dumped in the right-of-ways, and they responded to over two thousand three one one requests. They ensure that a safe flow of traffic throughout the city occurs, whether it's dry and sunny, gray and wet, or when the city manager loves covered with snow. So we have added resources to do more street sweeping in this budget and to support some other swim operations that were needed. Parks continues to substantia, park, park use continues to substantially grow each year, and we work hard to support the thousands and thousands of people who visit our parks, park sites each year, and to manage the large, local and national special events that occur in our spaces. We do spend a lot of time, really, it might seem flawless, but there is a lot of intent and strategy on how we manage different groups that are coming and going and what are, you know, can work together and what really need to be separated based on what the activities are, because risk management's really important to us, and also the impact to the site and impact to the park guest. Let's see, in our spare time, we manage city vehicles and equipment and a robust property management and parks capital program. Starting on page a hundred, we go into a summary of our six-year park CIP program, and we can talk a little bit about that unless you want to go into the details of just the operation stuff first.
Hold on here, so we're going to get to the CIP, which may answer some of our questions. Can I go ahead, Mr. Bo, can I? So on page one fifteen, it mentions Department of Ecology work crew program. And we had something like that through ARPA or some, it was a little bit different, Washington Youth Corps or whatever. So you compare and contrast that, so what's the difference between, how, how are you looking at using this Department of Ecology?
So we have, it's a conservation corps. Department of Ecology is really highly focused on parks and outdoors. They do trails, remove ivy, do plantings along shorelines. They did a lot of trail work for us this summer and created the trail along Fort Stillicum and Elwood. So that's kind of that group. They come in with supervisor, a van and equipment, and we meet with them and establish projects. They come in for a week at a time, and we have them budgeted, I think, for four weeks in the next year. The youth corps is really more of a concert, well, they did their presentation, you just saw that, I think, a couple of weeks ago, and they're really a conservation corps that's really bringing young adults, teens and young adults, and introducing them to that trade, so to speak, or giving them an opportunity to earn money as well as work outdoors in the summer. Those are, they, they have a few more restrictions just because of the age and equipment that they can use and the type of projects. But you saw that they did a lot of work at South Sound Wildlife Area. They did work for us in the parks. They helped with some prep for special events. They were great. We had them the week before Summer Fest, you know, helping us set up, because that's just a big effort. And so those are the differences between those two groups.
Okay, so the conservation corps, you see more on trail maintenance and that.
Right, we use them at Springbrook, primarily at Springbrook and Wordslake this year. At Springbrook was to do some prep work and clean up with the shoreline. At Wordslake, it was to do some safety sightline issues to get ivy to kind of pull back from eighty-eighth side, where there's just thick, thick vegetation, a lot of over native or invasive material, so it felt safer when you're walking into the park.
So it's way too early to tell what you would have them do in the future.
We're going to have, no, I, we can tell you what they're going to be doing. They're going to be working at Wordslake Park again, because it'll offset some of the work that we're doing with our capital projects. We're also going to be utilizing them along, doing some planting along the shoreline at Springbrook Park. With, they've removed some invasive things, and then we'll put in native materials to help in beef up the shoreline along Clover Creek. And let's see, I think they're going to do a joint project at the end of the year at Fort Stillicum Park, because during the two weeks at the end of December, there's just a few days here and there. And so they're going to be doing, bringing two teams together to do some work at Fort Stillicum, which will probably be trail work and invasive plant removal.
Okay, so you mentioned it. That was a great segue. Thank you very much. Invasive plants in Fort Stillicum Park, which there's still plenty, I mean, a lot of progress. And you would know better than anybody on Scotch Room over the years, but it still seems like there's a lot of trees that really are non-native that, you know, we haven't extended that discussion in our native trees, as much as we talk about trees. A lot of non-native trees, tons of blackberries. What's the, how does this budget fit in going forward and trying to improve that situation? I'm not asking you to fix it.
Well, well, it's, it's kind of like painting the Narrows Bridge. You know, you start at one end and you get to the other end, and you have to start back over. You know, it's three hundred and fifty acres, and so we really focus on different maintenance for different areas. For instance, we don't cut back the blackberries around Wahop Lake until the blackberries are done growing, because we would hear from our citizens regarding not being able to come pick blackberries. We open up the trails in the fall so that the cross-country and the runners and this, you know, things like that. Most of the trees, we only plant native trees. We don't plant non-native trees. So all of those trees were given to us by
No, they came with the property.
They came with the property. So we try and maintain them until they hit their life cycle, and then we would plant a native tree once we've removed them. So we work, again, different lo, levels of maintenance based on if it's an active area, a trail area, if it's out in the boon docks. You know, sometimes we just let things grow. And then, of course, we have our Scotch Room volunteers that are out there regularly pulling that stuff up. We do have done, you know, in the old days, they wouldn't let us mow things down, but we have done that, but stuff's pretty hardy, so.
It's really hardy. Okay, thanks.
So did you want to jump into the capital side, or did you want to go into detail about the basic operation, the divisions? Mayor, did you say you had some questions?
Yeah, I listed that, and it may be on the capital side, so.
So you're, you're in section. So you're, you're in section five.
Yep.
And the parks CIP starts on page four of section five.
Okay.
So on just going over page four, um, you know, we have a, this is a summary of our six-year CIP program and it shows over four million dollars in park investments for twenty-three and twenty-four. Besides replacing our park and playground equipment and our safety surfacing, which are thing, risk management things we do regularly. Two major projects coming soon will be to update American Lake Park and make the waterfront area accessible and continue the implementation of our Wordslake master plan, really focusing on phase-two enhancements. Both park improvement projects will have a significant impact for residents and will help the city meet our goal of um, making parks more equitable for all of our citizens. Those are some underserved areas and so we're really focusing on those areas to make sure that everybody can use, has a park close to home. We're also doing some design work at Edgewater Park to prepare us for the next two-year round, I mean, we just finished a two-year grant cycle, but we want to get ready for the next two-year grant cycle, so we'll be doing some design work at Edgewater Park. Um, we will also expand Oak Brook Park, uh, implement the Nisqually Partnership Project, which we're really excited about, and add it's adding some ADA parking at Fort Stillicum Park. We will be doing a little bit more work, Councilmember Bransitter, at um, the pavilion to remove some of the echoes so that when we do have those activities and events, it's, it's a pleasurable activity. And we're gonna be building the city's first pickleball courts. Pickleball is a big deal and we don't even have any pickleball courts, so we'll be building four if we get grant-funded, which I'm sure we will, um, at Harry Todd Park. Hmm? Four, yeah, and two will be ADA accessible, so that'll be for, yeah, we can. It'll bring some economic impact to that area too, so it's pretty exciting.
You should eventually do one in Fort Stillicum Park eventually, but yeah.
Possibly, yes.
Yes.
Uh, the park sign project will begin next year once we have the improved design and of course, we will be bringing back information on street ends. I know you're super excited about that. Um, but if you look at page four, you can see an overview, we do have detailed sheets for the project, so I'd be happy to answer any park CIP project questions that you might have.
I have some, while we're looking at it.
Okay, let's see, which page might you be looking at?
I would, I would love to find it somewhere, I don't see that in four. So, and these may not be in the right category for you, but I'm gonna ask anyway, so gateway signage.
Yes.
We're missing one from a few car intrusions at Bridgeport and uh.
On Bridgeport, that was our original gateway sign, yes.
Right.
So we're working with, it was hit about five times in two weeks.
Yeah.
Um, and it seemed like every time we repaired it, so we're actually working with Public Works Engineering and they're working with us on um, beefing up the exterior around where the gate, the gateway sign will be back in that area, we'll push it back and lift it up, it'll be, we're kind of looking at some of the design elements we did on a hundred and twelfth, which has stopped people from floating into that, so we're working with them right now actually to um, for the design and the site distance and all of that because that it, how we might fix it so we we don't encourage and putting some other things, it's used to be a nice, we used to call it the ice cream cone. Putting things down into the cone area to help relieve that wipe-through thing.
Got it.
Yeah.
So I, I guess my question was, would we see that as a capital budget item in twenty-three, twenty-four?
We are, we are doing gateways in, um, because it's already been approved, twenty-three and twenty-four. Um, but that is actually, we're using insurance proceeds and we have through, I think, the middle of twenty-twenty-three to meet that timeline for that, so.
So it's on our list somewhere.
Yes, absolutely, it's in process right now.
Right.
The second one, pardon me.
No, go ahead.
The second gateway, um, the other gateway that we'll be working on is off of Eighty-Fourth Street. So, um, yes, Tacoma Mall Boulevard, kind of by the theaters, by Levitt's area for those folks that have been around a while. But the eighty-four and South Tacoma Way, uh, pardon me, Eighty-Fourth and Tacoma Mall Boulevard. So that's where it's, but I think what we're gonna do is pull it forward off of that intersection and bring it down. Um, not all the way towards Lake Park, but kind of where that big retention point is, we're looking at this, the right-of-way right now because we're doing a big project there. So we can have some efficiencies with um, um, they'll put their uh, power and conduit and thing to us and then we can just piggyback on that and not go too much further and still have a nice effective sign in that area. Just not right up on that corner because, again, it's, it's, it's a difficult one right there.
Got it.
Um, I, Public Works Engineering's doing a signal project right there at Eighty-Fourth.
Yeah, so you can come down and put some lights up.
And Pine Street, Eighty-Fourth and Pine Street.
Got it.
Right across from Wordslake, we're piggyback. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna be working on that for some pedestrian safety crossing.
And hopefully some.
That's.
Street signs.
It's a street light.
Or street lighting.
Yeah. A street light and crossing and and that's, we're, again, as we say, working with the different divisions to get the biggest bang for our buck, they're working on that signal, we're fixing the entrance.
That's fantastic on that, because that's something that a couple of the public safety folks have commented of those of us. It's, it's really dark in that area and not as safe as it could be, yeah.
Yeah. And very little visibility, we really want to make the changes to Wordslake so we can bring in all the right people to do all the right things so that we can discourage some of the other things that might be happening.
Right things, yep, reader board signs, we've allocated the funds from ARPA, monies from ARPA. Where is that appearing anywhere?
I think that's in the communications budget or under the ARPA budget, I, I, that.
Yeah, Mayor Whalen, yeah, that's money that's already appropriated through ARPA, so um, Communications Division is taking the lead on that, working with some other city departments.
So.
It's work in progress.
Capital parts show up in the budget somewhere?
No, it would not, Mayor, because this is only for new funding for twenty-three, twenty-four, that's already been appropriated in two thousand twenty-two.
And then the third one, which is always on my wish list of all things bright and beautiful, is the work over by Colonial Plaza or the Unity Plaza, whatever we're gonna call it at some point.
Yeah.
Uh, where we're gonna put the public art in, that's forthcoming, I know that we utilized some funds recently to install some lighting of the oaks in the right-of-way there.
They're not actually oaks, but yes, the trees.
The trees.
And the light poles are in.
I saw those.
So, yeah, so we're working on that project right now, I don't think they've actually been electrically connected, we have to work on a meter. Uh, and then there'll be some of the property we own, we don't all own all of it, but yeah, that's happening right now.
And on the property we own, that was.
On the property that we own.
If we're gonna do in conjunction with the art that's forthcoming, some landscaping improvements and if not, could those be in the budget, may not be a big dollar item, but there is an image uh, that we'd like to obviously clean that corner up to the extent it's ours, you've done a great start with the landscaping poles, but I think having some landscaping in there like you've done on a hundred and twelfth and gravelly is not a bad idea. Part of it is, uh, in conjunction with the art, it will look good because it'll flow into it. Second thing is, if there's not something there that distracts the eye towards something of beauty, you see something of ugly, call it the QFC.
Yeah.
And it would be nice to kind of do something where we spiff up that corner, we've talked about it, now we've got the lighting in there, the electric stuff's in there, so be a good time to do it.
Right, and you've put resources in here to do that and that's happening now and we're gonna be digging it up with power and
Right.
all of that, so what, you'll see the cleanup when it's done there, but that's, that's in the plan as well.
Okay. Councilmember Bell and then Councilmember Bransitter.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, I had a question and sorry, it's back to the operational, I saw that you had it here for the graffiti removal supplies. I just was wondering, has there been an increased need for parks to, for cleanup or is staff feeling safe going out solo, do they need to go out with another staff person for some areas, I just, because I've heard, uh, you know, just for cleanup, removal, and you also mentioned garbage, so I just, are the, are there plenty of resources there for you?
We have the resources in here to do the work that we need to do and so, uh, I heard you say graffiti, but were you talking about homeless or graffiti?
Well, I just love cleanup all in one.
Yeah, so it, depending on the job, depends on who gets sent to do the task and depending on what the task is. And also with the graffiti removal, those are supplies that help support our Adopt a Street program as well. We do get the Adopt a Street program through a countywide, uh, the, the bags and the hats and those things, and so the graffiti removal supplies. As well as, um, we uh, have a piece of equipment that will, so some graffiti, you have to like sandblast off or you use walnut shells, it's kind of a funky thing, but um, because it's the, the concrete or a wall or a stairwell where it's got aggregate, you can't really clean it and you paint it. So we've got um, for sandblasting, so.
Right.
Too, so it's a variety of resources to do whatever job is.
I was just wondering if because of the increase of the way um, uh, some of like the unhoused might, you know, and the debris that's left over, if there's enough resources to do those kinds of cleanups, because I know sometimes it's um, it's not just picking up garbage.
Oh, it's, it's, it's very, it's a challenging um, task. And again, we, depending on the task, the location and what's there, and we have a very um, uh, consistent protocol for how that's approached, um, from just the first review of it to the cleanup. Um, again, we use a variety of resources, sometimes it's us, sometimes.
But you feel like there's adequate resources to do that and safety for the staff too?
Yes, of course.
Not here, but just other places I've heard, because they're in more challenging situations and places.
We put the right team together, we utilize our police department, we use our behavioral health people, depending on the, what the need is, um, we bring the right people there so that we, safety is very important, not just for visitors in our park, but for our staff as well, of course. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dodger, that is, in this, in this CIP, I'm looking at the sections that relate to the H Barn complex restoration.
Okay.
Uh, do that. You know, section five, page five, okay, there's sort of a, you know, a, 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 a summary where it starts the six-year plan and it uh, it shows uh, um, under revenue sources, there's two lines. And uh, they both, they both have the same code, so can you just, so I don't make an assumption or what's the difference between the two lines that.
Sure.
That's my error, I created that new table at the last minute and I did not update it in its entirety. If you turn to page fourteen, it outlines the H Barn, it is the same information that you saw in December of twenty-twenty-one. So the, this portion here is the construction portion of it, I think the number that you saw previously was over seven million dollars. This is the city's portion of the construction. Uh, so the funds anticipated totals three million seven hundred and eighty thousand. That three point one million that you're seeing that has the same title is the contriba- contributions, the fundraising and such. So, that's my error, if not, Mary.
Okay, so, so, so the first line is fundraising?
Fundraising totals three point one million. And the three million seven hundred and eighty thousand is funds anticipated. Those funds anticipated include the two million dollar in bonds that we will be applying for LTAC dollars. It also includes a million dollars in grants and other resources and potentially Pierce County LTAC dollars. And then there is also potential of two hundred and fifty thousand from the state capital budget request and another five hundred and thirty thousand that will be determined at a later date.
So there isn't anything in here that reflects funds that the Partners for Parks Initiative would raise?
It is, that is the three point one million dollars for the construction portion.
So the. I, I, I guess, I, we're looking at which page?
Um, page fourteen.
Fourteen.
In the box where it talks about the project description and justification, the third paragraph down, you'll see that the Partners for Parks Capital Campaign fundraising is three point five million, a portion of that is for their operations, so prior to construction. The portion that relates to the construction is actually three point one million dollars.
So it's. So the, the expenditures in twenty-twenty-four, which is the biennium we're talking about the budget for. That. Is the, 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 the two point three million.
Councilmember Bransitter, um, the, on, on page five, there are the, the two pro formas, because that's what they are, they are not budget proposals, they're not included as part of the twenty-three and twenty-four biennial budget. They're simply disclosed to you based on previous conversations and previous presentations that have been provided to this body, so for example, the H Barn complex, again, it's just disclosing the pro forma that Partners for Parks work with the city on developing. But there is no budget proposal for the H Barn twenty-three and twenty-four. There would be no budget proposal, as you recall, until Partners for Parks comes forward with, you know, hopefully all of their three point one million dollars or at least most of it before we would move forward with committing city monies and then moving forward on the project.
Okay, so the budget that we'll be approving here in the next couple of months will not include funding for this project because it needs to be triggered by success by Partners for Parks.
That, that's correct, Councilmember Bransitter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and page four is showing you what the proposal is for the park CIP program and um, that's where the twenty-three and twenty-four would be right out there.
Ms. Dodger, could you please remind me or remind us your state grant request that you've got outstanding, which apparently you scored pretty well on, so we're very hopeful. One was the pickleball court that we're all anticipating, but what?
So, so one was for, one was for pickleball courts at Harry Todd. Another one was, we pulled out the BMX track at Wordslake Park and did a youth athletic fund request, so it would be up to three hundred and fifty thousand for that, uh, which is part of Wordslake Phase Two, and then there's two um, state grants of, uh, one is five hundred thousand. I'm working off the top of my head here, so I should probably open this page up. Um, is uh, five hundred thousand for um, land and water conservation local parks. And then the other one is, uh, or five hundred is for local parks and I think it's one point two five million for land and water conservation fund.
And those are for what?
Wordslake Phase Two.
And though, that's, that's how you're funding Wordslake?
For Phase Two, correct, because Phase One's already been funded and it's getting ready to be permitted. And we're really hoping to um, work efficiently to maybe be able to do them uh, at the same time, like we did Harry Todd, we were able to, to work that out with the grant, all the different grant sources and it just made for a more efficient program, so.
Okay, so this, this is very much a, and again, anticipating that the legislature funds those buckets.
Correct.
That we've talked about, that this is very much about Wordslake Park, but all, but all four projects, I would note are in designated census tracts, so.
Correct.
I need, okay, so from an equity standpoint, it's a.
Right, they really support that um, goal that you have.
Keep going.
Okay, last one, um, if we're done with capital for parks, we could jump into the property management CIP program, that's starting on page, uh, breakdown is on page sixty-four, gives you the CIP for the next six years, but really, um, our property management, these projects are gonna continue to keep our city facilities working as well as assessing and updating our sites with new technologies and conservation requirements um, to make both City Hall and the police station more efficient. Major projects that we'll be focusing on next year that are new will be moving an aging fuel tank from Fort Stillicum Park and really get setting up the operation appropriately with technology, right now we still have a clipboard and paper and a pen over at the French Street Shop, which is the, we call the M and O shop. Um, we're gonna be updating City Hall HVAC and utility um, upgrades, which is, we're doing an audit right now and I think the reports just do right now, and then we're gonna continue to extend the life of our parking lots.
What's the City Hall Plaza improvement amount for?
City Hall Plaza improvement, that was on the previous six-year CIP, is truly taking a look at the area in front of the, initially it was put on there because the farmer's market was here and we needed more space. But it's really just to take a look at the um, plaza and the fountain has leaked and so that's why it's not on.
Take care of the fountain, do you think, for next year?
I beg your pardon?
Will that take care of the fountain, hopefully to get it back up and running?
Uh, not to, I mean, it'll, it'll be part of it, right, but we talked about even um, just cleaning some areas up, adding some vegetation, removing some things, but um, we don't have a site plan for it, but we know we need to make some upgrades there. So that's what that's for. And it will include partially the fountain.
Partially, as in like water might flow?
Correct.
Got it.
Yeah, it's, it's leaking, it's not a good use of resources because water leaks and so it's just an ongoing, and honestly, when um, there were other folks that were here twenty-four hours a day, they were using it for a variety of resources and it was really not a good, um, from a sanitation perspective.
Got it.
It wasn't being used appropriately, so um, that's why we turned it off. But it was leaking, so that didn't help.
They're gonna leak where it's leaking?
That was probably the least of what was happening in there.
Deputy Mayor? Did you have a comment on that or?
No.
Just checking.
I was just wondering what parking lot are we improving? Is that the plaza?
Um, which one? So we, um, I don't have the details here. So every year we, um, stripe the parking lot. We go to different parking lots. We stripe. Sometimes we do a seal coat, it bright, but we're doing it on all the different parking lots to extend the life of them.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's parks and city facilities. So really, that's it. Um, you know, we want to continue to do the work that we're doing, create a vibrant, healthy community, keep things safe, clean and green, keep things equitable. And if you had specific questions or wanted to go back to the detail of any of our projects, um, there's not a lot of major changes. You know, we're always changing things up. For instance, you know, we're doing summer programs for kids. It's day camps and it's a variety of different kinds of things, but, um, we're still doing the work that's important for our community. So.
Well, I appreciate that. I mean, uh, you know, not to sound too humorous or facetious, but I'm a big advocate. If you got something, at least fix it so it's usable, whether it's the plaza in front of the fountain or whatever it takes. You need to make it smaller so it's less accessible to knucklehead use or whatever, but.
You're talking about the fountain?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I was on the same page.
Yes, exactly.
It's in there.
Well, okay, as long as that takes care of it. Exactly. Thank you, Mr. Bo. We appreciate that. That'll be on the city managers, uh, to do last.
That would not be in my budget.
Yeah, all right.
Any, anything else? Anybody have questions?
I think that's it for now. Thank you. And just, uh, you know, heartfelt, uh, big thanks for the past year of great events. And, uh, we were fortunate to see many of the items that we budgeted for really come to fruition and the public very much enjoy them. So kudos to you and the staff and it looks like we'll have even greater success in the years to come.
That's our plan. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, we are going to take a five minute recess while we get our police chief ready to go for the police department budget presentation. So go ahead and take five minutes and take a stretch break and then come on back. You guys have to wait till you get us back on. Are we on? So, okay. All right, we've returned after our short recess for the proposed biennial budget presentation from our liquid police department chief Zaro.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Wynn and, uh, council members, uh, given the, um, I think the size of our budget.
So you, you are in section three, operating budget, page one eighty three. One eighty three in section three.
Oh, sorry about that. Okay. I thought it was rhetorical. Uh, so, um, given the size of the budget, what I wanted, uh, to do, uh, just initially is go over, uh, some police department overview. What we've done and what, you know, we do want to do or the, the goals are coming up for the next biennium, uh, with the, the money that we're asking for. In the last biennium, uh, with the, what the council has funded us with, we were able to get quite a bit done. Uh, a lot of it was, uh, you know, managing crises in one form or another. Uh, but, uh, in the last band, and we were able to reestablish our bike patrol program, um, did a lot in the way of officer wellness. Uh, primarily there in contracting with the mental health counselor that, um, has been made available to our officers and is, uh, become a known quantity to them, which is what it takes in order to gain some trust and make that a valuable resource. We've continued our crime reduction efforts. Um, I think statistically, when you, uh, historically, we are still, um, we've made significant strides in those areas. And even when you break down some of the recent increases we've seen, they're in just a few small areas. It's not, um, they're not broad, uh, categories of crimes that we're seeing increases in. Uh, we had initiated our, our body worn camera trial period. What we, when we saw, you know, the large number of retirements and separations last summer uh, and fall, we went to work hiring. Uh, we first had to, um, reassign some folks to meet our basic patrol function, uh, but went to work hiring. And we were able to hire, uh, at least twenty, we're over that now, uh, people that, um, will backfill some of those spots. Currently, we are one person above, uh, our budgeted staffing amount. Um, what's important to, to keep in mind is twelve of them are still in some form of training, whether it's at the academy or field training, so they don't technically count. And then we also have other, uh, impending retirements. You know, as with everybody in every department, we, uh, had to, to work our way through COVID nineteen in this last biennium. And that is, you know, a department where our, our service is, uh, impossible to do virtually, um, in, you know, most cases. So this is, this was a situation where even though we were faced with this pandemic, uh, our officers still had to be out there and still providing the service that was expected. And I think as a department in the city, we did a really good job of managing our way through that. You know, last biennium also saw, uh, several public demonstrations over, uh, police use of force and, uh, you know, the same thing that, uh, jurisdictions saw all over the country. Uh, I am, uh, I'm proud of how the city handled those with both, um, in the police department and with, and out. I think as a group, we did a good job of allowing free speech, recognizing that there might be some minor disruption to, you know, the, the peace and calm of everyday lives. But they all ended up being peaceful demonstrations and, um, everybody was heard and it, I, I do think it worked out in the end. You know, our partnerships with different community groups, uh, are still there. Uh, like a lot of things during COVID, they had to be done remotely. And so I do think some of our partnerships suffered because of that, but, uh, we were able to, um, at least maintain those connections to a degree. Uh, and then we also, um, added one lieutenant position, which I do think is significant, giving, given the, the amount of work, uh, that, that, uh, uh, the, the position, the, the rank has taken on over the past couple of years with body worn cameras, um, emergency management, uh, the expansion of the in car camera program. Um, just there's a lot more, uh, functions like that that really do take a lot of time. And I think even when they, uh, the body worn camera program is up and running and it's something that's, you know, embedded in, in us, I think it's still going to take a significant bit of management. Uh, for the next biennium twenty three, twenty four, uh, some of the key projects that we want to, uh, accomplish uh, with what is, uh, with the money that we're requesting is a continued, uh, implementation and getting to full implementation of body worn cameras. And that's, um, that's happening quickly. And I do anticipate, uh, after the first of the year, we will be eas- easily be able to say we are at one hundred percent implementation and that, um, we are, you know, moving, uh, in a good direction. The, uh, what we've been, what we started doing, what I do want to continue doing, and I think, I should give the caveat to all of this, uh, is that come February, uh, eighteenth, um, there will be a new chief and that's, you know, somebody that who I would expect have their own ideas for the directions of the department. So, um, these are things that I think would be reasonable, uh, we're focusing on now and I think reasonable to continue. But it could be, it could change. But we, we began some targeted enforcement, uh, in the area of retail theft, uh, which so far I think has been successful. We've gotten a lot of po- uh, positive feedback from our community and, uh, members and our business community on that. Focusing not just on, uh, one on pursuits, doing some of the pursuit emphases that we've been doing, and that's to get our hands on the people that are, pardon, frequently running from us, um, but also engaging, uh, continuing to engage in the, the legislative process to try and improve those laws. We need to continue and, uh, hiring, uh, recruiting and hiring, uh, commissioned personnel. We do know that in twenty twenty four, uh, we have another round of, or will experience another round of retirements. And most of those at that time will be sergeants. That's just, just by virtue of their age. So we'll, we'll see a big turnover in twenty twenty four. So we'll need to keep our, uh, our foot down on the gas pedal for hiring and, uh, recruiting.
What's the number you anticipate for retirements in twenty twenty four?
I would say, um, off the top of my head, uh, probably about ten.
And that's experienced sergeant level folks?
Correct. Correct.
Thank you. Chief?
Yes.
So how far in advance would you need to start hiring to have them ready to step into those roles? What can you do that?
Uh, we can do that. So, and one of the things, some of the flexibility that the city manager has allowed me is, um, doing some forecasting and, um, planning on over hiring from our budgeted amount with the understanding that, you know, we know when people are leaving. We push that envelope a little bit sometimes, but, um, so far our, our folks that are retiring, or, or leaving the department have given us, uh, plenty of notice that allows us to know, okay, this person is going to be leaving in June of next year. So we, we can hire in anticipation of that. So that's, that is one of the things that's been working in our favor, but, um, you know, the, it, it, some of it depends on, on just the amount of notice that we're given.
How has the retention bonus that we paid in anticipation that would give you a three year lead time? How effective has that been as a tool?
Uh, somewhat effective. Uh, I know that we've had a couple of people leave and return the bonus, um, for various reasons. And uh, I don't think that they started out taking it thinking. for various reasons. And I don't think that they started out taking it thinking that they were just going to hold on to it for, you know, six months and then return it. There's, knowing the people that were affected by it, I think there's some, some personal circumstances that led to their departure that were not planned. But I do think that by and large, it's been somewhat effective in keeping people here. I, what I can point to is that nobody that we've, you know, nobody, well, I should say almost ever, but especially in the past few years, has applied to go to any other departments in, in the state. So there's a lot of lateral movement amongst police departments as of late, and we are not seeing. And I would, I would hazard a guess that the retention bonus played a role.
Good. Mr. Moki. So when you talk about the sergeants, and you won't, you won't be here for that. Typically, when you get that lead time, if you're gonna, there's an internal promotion process, I assume, that is there testing for a sergeant like there is for like detectives and that kind of? So how long does that process usually take? Is that a six-month process? Is that a one-year process to? If I'm, and I don't even know the next step from sergeant, people move from patrol, is that typically, and then they, they apply? So describe that process and about how long that takes, or are those positions that are? Or is, is your preference to higher end, and how long does that take? Or is that a, or is that a position that lends itself to lateral hires?
Certainly. So with sergeants, as with any promotional process, the rules for that are governed by civil service. So what, what happens is you go through the testing process, which is, can be maybe three months long. And what you do is establish an eligibility list. There can be, I mean, however many people you want it to be. So say ten people take the test, they all pass, they all do well, and they all get ranked on the civil service list. That list is good for one year at first, and then can be extended at two six-month increments. So the most it could be good for is two years. So what we always try to do is have a list available so that in the event there is maybe a sudden retirement, that we have a list available to pick from. Then once that person's promoted, then we hire behind them.
Okay, okay. So you always have this list out there because it's under, under civil service.
Right. We might have some small windows in between lists while we do the testing process where there isn't one. But usually when we see, it's something we keep track of, is the, the expiration date of the eligibility list. And if we're getting close to that, then we'll start, work with HR to start a testing process. And once that's done, then we just, the Civil Service Commission certifies the list, and then it's good, like I said, for one to two years.
Have you ever done any lateral hires then for sergeant?
Not since we started as a department.
Okay, thank you.
But some other goals, again, expanding our community partnerships, I think we've done a good job in the past of being, being connected and identifying different groups to connect with. Each of our, well, prior to COVID, each of our command staff member was associated or a member of one of the service groups and then also the chamber in Lakewood. So there was, had, tried to maintain all those formal connections. And then we had informal connections as well, just partnerships with like the school district or our neighborhood associations. So we do, we, we were plugging along or humming along with those, again, until COVID hit and some of that relaxed. And I do think over the next biennium, it would be a good, a good plan to reengage and start building up those partnerships again and make them stronger.
One I was gonna ask you about is years ago, it seems like Chief Saunders had a pretty good weed and seed program going with the local property management or landlord folks involved in the various larger apartment complexes in town. Is that something we can do, plan to do, could do, fruitful to do?
I don't think a lot has changed. And weed and seed was a formal program done through Safe Streets that went, really kind of fell off, I think, after Larry Saunders left. And I, I honestly would have to look into it again. We just haven't re-explored it to find out what, what that program's like now.
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm wondering if maybe with the advent of the neighborhood position that's coming on, maybe that's something that could be looked at. I don't know what that program is, but it sounds like it could be a good marriage between PD and the new neighborhood coordinator.
Surely possible.
Something like that, yeah.
Okay. Adding the second mental health professional through the Greater Lakes contract, very good news on that front. We finally were able to, I shouldn't say we, MultiCare and Greater Lakes has been working hard to identify somebody. And it's, it's a pretty small niche to fill, you know, that there's not a, a lot of people that get into mental health work that specifically to work with police. So finding that right person is important. And with the proliferation of so many co-responder programs, competition for people like that has skyrocketed. So after, you know, several months, because it's been months since Carolyn Seer retired, MultiCare and Greater Lakes have found somebody, and we plan on bringing them on here very soon. And we'll probably make a point to bring him and introduce you to, introduce that person to you all. So we're at one, yes.
Yes, it would be great to kind of, when that person comes on to get a a flavor for the approach, you know, just so we're educated about what kind of the formalized approach is with the program and how they go about doing their business, you know, on daily or weekly basis, just so we have an idea what to tell the public when we're asked about how effective our program is and what we're doing on the street.
Yeah, I agree. And I would also say that, you know, this program's been in place for seven years. Nothing's, nothing's effective forever. And with a new person and maybe a new chief and some new
Approach.
New, fresh eyes on it, there might be a new approach out there that it would be time for. So that's just been my thoughts recently, as I hear about so many co-responder programs that are all sort of the same, that at some point you become stagnant. And I think to, to maintain your effectiveness, you have to look at, at how to, how to grow and how to, how to change. So it might be time for that as well.
Great.
The Police Explorer, Explorer Program, that had to be essentially shut down during COVID. And the one thing about kids is they keep getting older. So they didn't stop aging during COVID, and a lot of them aged out and moved on. But that is something that I do think was a good, it's a great program for any department. It really worked well for us. There's, you know, a couple of things you need. One, and one of those in particular, is the right officer that's one that wants to invest themselves and invest the time in man, in running that kind of a program. So that, but that is something that I think would benefit the city and the department. Working on an abbreviated Citizens Academy for the youth council and high school students, I know that this kind of came out of the Warriors of Change program at Lakes High School, where we went, several people, I know Councilmember Moss was there, went and met with different groups at the school that were in this Warriors of Change program. And one of the things that they mentioned was finding some way to connect with police. And at the time, we had our Citizens Academy that was fresh on my mind. And so I talked with them about what their, their thoughts were of, you know, something shorter geared more towards high school students. And they seemed to think it was a really good idea. So, and I, I think that there's a lot of merit to that as well. So I do think working on something like that moving forward would be positive. Restructuring the PIO role, you know, the, the traditional PIO role in police departments is really defunct. Having that one PIO who, you know, fields the calls from the media and goes out and does the on-camera stuff all the time. It just, it's, it's not there anymore. And even if we wanted it to be, it's not there for the media. We, you know, I, I used to do that. And when I talked to Chris Lawler, who's our guy now, it just doesn't work that way anymore. We don't get the daily phone calls like we used to from reporters saying, hey, what's going on today? You got anything for us? And they're not prowling around with their vans and their cameras, looking for stuff and wanting to jump out and get you on camera for something. That's just, there, there will be, still be the occasional need for that, but that's just not where the, the position is at now. So one of the things that we're looking at is, and moving towards, is more of a team approach with a sergeant that sort of will be there to handle a lot of that traditional stuff that may come up, but also have a group of officers underneath that sergeant that are, you know, working at different times on the department, who can be out there and be on social media more frequently and just creating more of a social media presence and footprint. And I talked with, with Bryn on her way out about it as well. And it's, it's definitely going to be a, a team approach between the City Hall and the police department.
I would think that would be the better way to do it, yeah.
It would, yeah. There is, you know, I think people follow the police department for different reasons than they might, you know, the Parks Department. But still, I think there's some consistent messages, you know, times when we would have consistent messaging to get out there. But that's, one of the things that, that, you know, we, we do want to, where we do want to move towards is that sort of team approach. And again, with a sergeant and several officers throughout the department.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, there's talk about bringing back the connecting cops and students. Would that fit into that program?
Not sure which program that is.
It, well, it was where the policeman went out and just met in the stu- in the classrooms with the students and just let them talk.
Oh. I would certainly be open to that. I know we had a very successful event a couple of years ago with Grant Twiman pulling it all together through Clover Park and doing it at Lockburn, I think one at Hutlock, where it was basically, that, that's what it was. And, and I'm, I'm definitely open to that. And I, I would imagine, you know, being able to make those kind of connections would be a priority for whoever you, you know,
Right.
you select as the next chief. But making those connections would be important. And so I would think that we, that would certainly be a goal and a priority for the next biennium.
LMCC is working with Grant to get back into Lakes.
Oh, great.
So I'll remind them to.
We're here.
Yes.
Okay. The other thing that does with youth, just tagging on that a little bit, is what a wonderful opportunity to seed plant in the minds of young folks, what a good honorable profession Public Safety Service can be. And it gets them in the mindset that, you know, these people are, are all right, and they do some important things, and they're real people. And hey, I might be interested in doing that too someday.
Little exposure therapy.
Absolutely. It's a good time to get ahold of folks and educate them about career paths and.
That was part of the comment that came back from the ones that we did at Hutlock, was that they, once they opened up, they understood it was different than what they had been told. They learned a lot, right? And the police learned a lot, and we learned a lot from the students. So it was a good program.
Especially if you get some of these young people like Lysia Gockel in there. She's just great and.
She's a rock star. And we've got a lot of younger, and one of the, one of the benefits, it's been a lot of work, hiring all these, these people. And it, it hurt seeing that many people retire and leave at the same time or in such a short amount of time. But there is a lot of youthful enthusiasm on the department right now. And it's, it's perfect for programs like that.
Exactly.
They're not so far removed from high school.
Yeah.
And just have that enthusiasm of being new to the profession and coming in at a time when they know that that's what's expected of them. So I, I do think it's a good time to move towards that. And I think we'll have plenty of people willing to participate and, and make that work. Mr. Branson, yep?
Yeah, Chief. In terms of, I think, researches, and you mentioned the Explorer Program, but what's, what's, what's sort of an adult volunteer participation do we currently have in programs? I mean, quite a few years ago, there used to be a number of roles that adult volunteers played. And there were quite a few different ones. But what's the current status and is that a direction that you would suggest that a new chief look at, given that this is a community that broadly is really supportive of the work of the department?
I, it, well, first to answer your question about the current status is, we really don't have any opportunities right now for adult volunteers. We did, used to have parking enforcement and some other intel gathering or, or just administrative processes that folks could come in and do. We don't have that anymore. That is, from my perspective, it, it was, I don't say hard to manage, but it was managing adult volunteers and requiring or relying on them to accomplish a certain task was difficult. Only because, you know, they're volunteers and you have that work that needs to be done, and they may not be able to always get in there and do it. So with, the programs kind of fell off and we have not reinvigorated them. And if I was going to be chief for the next two biennium, it probably wouldn't be a priority of mine. I could certainly, I'd always be open to ideas. But that would be something that, you know, the next chief might want to look at, but I don't, I don't know. You would have, that would have to be, I guess I don't have the vision for that. And I should correct one thing, that the one area where we do have adult volunteers is in our reserve program. And that's even dwindled quite a bit. So.
So, so, so what are the criteria for someone interested in joining the reserve program?
Well, you have to, it's, and here's why it's kind of tough, is you have to pass essentially the same background process as a full-time officer and go through an academy on your own. And you're not getting, you're doing all this for free. And it is a, and there is a, a hard time commitment for the amount of hours that you put into going out and working. But I mean, you, you apply, you go through an academy that's like one night a week or maybe a couple nights a week. When, we actually hosted a few of those over the past couple of years. But like I say, and you have to go through the same background, polygraph, everything. So the interest in being a reserve isn't out there as much as it used to be either.
And what is the department's commitment to participating in either state or regional task forces or, or activities, instructing in Des Moines or, or the various task forces that are there. I mean, and although many of those, we get some reimbursement for the time that those officers spend, that you don't get an extra FTE because of it. So about how many FTEs are really committed on a at, at a given time in, in roles like that?
We have four on a full-time basis right now. We have one who just started as an instructor up at, no, actually, next week he starts as an instructor up in Verion at the academy. John Babcock. We have Sergeant Jeff Carroll and Detective Todd Jordan, who are both on the Puget Sound Auto Theft Task Force. And we have Detective Andy Hall, who is assigned to the DEA, the T-NET Task Force. I do think that there is significant value to the city for all of those. The academy position, they, a lot of that is me wanting to do our part. They are starving for instructors with a good experience and an ability to teach. And that's, John Babcock certainly fits that, that bill. And this is And this is, um, in also in acknowledgement that they, they were able to get. Seven of our recruits into one academy class. Um, that is a big ask, uh, and they came through and part of it is me wanting to reciprocate and. Um, provide somebody to help with the, the teaching load that they, they have. Uh, and we do get reimbursed with full salary and benefits on them. Uh, the DEA Task Force, um, detective, that with the way, um. The change in drug laws after the Blake decision, uh, that is really the only amount of. Significant narcotics enforcement we participate in. Uh, and I do think it's, it's significant in that it focuses. High-level distributors that are bringing poison into our communities. And, and having somebody on that task force, um, allows us to connect and allows us to know. More about what's going on in Lakewood. Uh, and then the auto theft task force, I don't think it's any, uh, mystery about what's going on with auto theft. In the, in the state of Washington and in Pierce County. And having those folks allows them to bring resources like their, uh, the automatic, auto, automated license plate readers. Into Lakewood and go through parking lots, uh, throughout the city looking for stolen cars. Which has been pretty successful when they have been able to come to Lakewood. And they rotate those around through the partner agents, so, um, it is a lot. Uh, Lakewood is connected in a lot of different places, um, but, uh, none of them are just because. I think there is significant value to Lakewood, um, with each of those. And we do get, um, for, I think, three of the four, or at least two of the four, we get reimbursed for their full salary benefits. Yep. All right, one last point on, uh, key projects over the next couple of years, and this is something that, uh. Well, all of these too, I've worked with Assistant Chief Unprit on, and these are, um, aren't things that I've just worked on in a vacuum. They're, they're things that he knows we're presenting as priorities and, uh, whoever the next chief is, he's ready to. You know, he, he believes in these as well. But one of the things we talked about was what to do with special ops, given the, um, change in drug laws. You know, as, as you know, special ops traditionally is focused on local, uh, drug cases. Um, and, you know, with Blake, that really changed and what coincided with Blake was COVID. Uh, and so not only did we have Blake, but we had COVID, which, a- and all the, well, not COVID, uh, well, that. But then we had all of our retirements and, and resignations last year, so we had to pull people from other units to staff patrol. And one of those units was special ops, and one of the reasons was because of the, the, this significant reduction in the amount of drug enforcement. We could actually do, uh. But we do think that there is still a place for a unit like that, but what, it's, it's a matter of what they're focused on. And I think as we, um, are rebuilding and getting, uh, all these folks off of training and able to staff up again. I think the, uh, there is a place for a unit like that focusing on things like gun crimes, serial crimes. Uh, and, uh, some fugitive apprehension. Um, those are, um, you know, it, it won't be as robust of a unit. But I think it'll be, it'll be very effective, uh, and I think the work is there and the need is there for something like that. So that, that will be the focus for that unit as, like I said, as people start coming off training and we're able to, to start staffing up.
Great.
Um, that, uh, is. That's just my general overview that I wanted to present and, um, I, without going through line by line. I just wanted to present that and then, um, open it to any questions and if there's anything you've seen in our budget that, um. Has caught your eye or you have a question about it, you have to answer. One of the things that, um, a focus was, uh, that I focused on was training, uh, in this budget. And the big reason for that is the amount of new people that we have. Um, so, you know, the trade-off for this youthful enthusiasm is a lack of experience, uh, and a lack of training. And so that there is going to be, need to be a big focus on training over the next couple of years. So, uh, you'll see, um, a significant amount of, uh, money dedicated towards that. Yes, sir.
So, just with regard to the overall, um, key projects and, and focus, I think. Staffing up is a great thing. Some of the things that I have seen and heard that have been very. Successful, there are lots of things that have been very successful, but the retail emphasis of late, bicycle patrols of late. Uh, have been very, I think, successful. And the common theme, again, from what I'm hearing, is visible presence. And visible presence, to the extent we can expand that or fully fund it with regard to patrol. And having the training, uh, to as many do and some do maybe more often than others. Getting out of the cars and actually engaging with the business owners and walking through and having that physical presence. Uh, I think that is a successful thing. And to the extent we can put meat on the bone with regard to the budget to enhance that opportunity for success, I think that would be a good thing.
Well, here's, here's where that comes in, is once we do get staffed up and where we, um. Can be effective is we can start backfilling our NPO unit. Uh, and that, and our traffic unit is that, um, I don't think we, uh, I don't think traffic, our traffic unit. And I don't say this just because the traffic sergeant's sitting in the back of the.
Right.
Room. I don't think they get enough credit for, uh, providing just a, a safety presence. Despite, you know, in, in.
It's certainly helpful, you bet.
It is.
Having the cars just out on the roads and even stopped with lights flashing, that's huge.
Yeah, so, um, uh, being able, we're, you know, getting to a point where we can bring some NPOs back, who can go out and make some of those personal connections. But also our traffic unit, who can be out there with the, the, the big shiny presence.
Absolutely.
You know, in the motor in public, I think that'd be huge.
Yep, I do too. And that, that is another thing people that do say is they say, geez, if we just could have a car at this intersection.
You know.
Just placed there, uh, and.
We've done that in the past where we've had, uh, businesses that were experiencing, you know, high, uh, high loss. Or a lot of significant issues in the parking lots, we've just placed cars in.
Yeah.
It's been to be effective, yep.
Especially some of those that may have been hit and aren't running, you can just put them there for a while.
Right.
Exactly.
I can tell you the two bikes of, uh, Hutlock School made a huge difference.
Oh, yes.
And they were, I only saw them twice and from then on, I never saw the speeding through there like I had seen in the past.
Well, uh, I will tell you Sergeant Porsche is in charge of our traffic unit and I was actually talking to him specifically about Phillips Avenue for Phillips Road. And, um, there was one day where he was out there and he didn't write a ticket less than, for less than fifty miles an hour over the speed limit. Not over, fifty miles an hour, so twenty miles an hour over the speed limit. So people fly on that road.
Yes, they do.
Just on Phillips going down and, and the intersection, Ken Witko's wife got hammered.
T-bone.
Hmm, just the other night, crazy.
But all things that we are in, uh, a large group of those trainees are due to come out training in December. So we'll be at a point then where we can start backfilling some of those units and maybe after the first of the year, you'll start seeing more of that presence out there.
Great. Just not when I'm screaming on my way to the council meeting.
They, we don't stop many Coopers.
Yeah.
Chief, um, so you, you mentioned on the special ops and you're, you're changing that to kind of meet the current. Conditions, I guess, um. Uh, and then you mentioned the mental health position and I know our. How we do the co-responder is a little bit different than what the county does. Um, but they're basically the, the same kind of model. So the, the, the department is now coming up on twenty years and, uh, on being at, in its own, on its own. And, um. And policing has changed a lot, um, for better or worse, and I'm not going to get into that, but. It, is there? I mean, a- as you're going out the door and if I'm the new chief. Is there, and is it, is it this, these incremental changes that meet the changing world? Like the two that I mentioned, or is there another way to kind of? Um, i- i- is the department, is it time to look at how the department's structured and try to figure out kind of? What's the needs of the community? Because it is a different, the crime rate's lower. The makeup of the crime, I guess, is different too. There seems to be less violent crime than there used to be. Um. Is there anything like that that we should be looking at or maybe, maybe thinking about? Not a defund, don't, you, you know, this is not a shot at, this is more of a, um. The department was put together to meet certain needs of the community at that certain point in time. We're now, we're now a generation ahead on that, so, and the community has changed, so. Is it something that we should consider as a council? W- working with the new chief and saying, is, is, is there a different way of, of delivering our services?
Absolutely. Uh, I think there's, uh, but first, before you ask that question of your new chief, know what services you want to be delivered. Um, and it's, uh. Uh, I think there's always room and we should always be looking at how we can do things better or more efficiently. Um, but, um, you know, we, we, people have gotten used to certain types of services and how they're delivered. If you're going to ask, you know, okay, how, how do we change what we're doing? Make sure that, I think it needs to go back one step and say, what services as a city do we actually want to provide? Um, and start there and then say, okay, now how do we want to provide those? Uh, and I think that's, um, that can give you some of the answers you're looking for. Maybe you end up back at the exact same spot, but at least you look at, okay, what services are we doing? Because clear, I mean, I can tell you having, you know, approaching twenty-nine years that, um. What police do and what's, what they're asked to do now is different than what it was twenty-nine years ago. Um, but the police departments are structured essentially the same. Um. I don't know, I don't ever remember a time when somebody's actually said, what services do we want to provide? Um, it's always just kind of changed organically. Um, so if you want to have some intention about it and say, you know, okay, here's what, here's what makes a difference in public safety. Here's, um, what services could make that difference and how do we, how do we provide those? I think there is definitely room for that discussion, uh, and something that you, I think, should ask. Your new chief as, you know, somebody comes in with, you know, a different perspective or, you know, their ideas of their own.
Okay, yeah, because it just seems like you know the world and there, there are things that I think. When I think back and things that were very, very successful, in my mind, they were successful. Um, now are like you can't even do, right? So, um, and, or, or are, are no longer considered to be proper or whatever. And I'm not saying that at the time that these activities were even illegal, I'm just saying that. Um, in some jurisdictions, they seem to work incredibly well and now people say, well, they know they didn't really work and. Um. So, okay, I just, I, I, and I don't know where I'm going with that, I, it's just that I'm just thinking that there maybe are these benchmark times. Where we say, okay, so are we structured the way we want to be structured? Because. The community itself and how, um. It's either incremental change or some, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, I think Mr. Bulke makes a point of, of, you know, constantly reviewing. Not just how we do things, but what it is that we're going to do. And certainly the Behavioral Health Contact Team Initiative stemmed from an analysis of. Um, you know, there's a problem we want to address, that's, how, how do we want to do it to, to go on? I think it's, it's, it's easier to do things like that than it is to stop doing things. That, uh, you know, that, that when we're, we're dealing with a community of, that spans five generations. There are people that still like the things that the police did thirty years ago for them, even though their. The, the data might show that those things don't add to public safety as much as, as we can to do that. But that, um, uh, you know, we, we've talked, I mean, in, in, before about. The fact that we, we really want to make decisions and have them be data-driven. Um, is, um. Is the, uh, department's ability to access or gather data healthy?
Uh, excuse me, oh, absolutely, and I, yeah, knowing, um. Being able to support what you, what you're seeing anecdotally or not, I think is, is always valuable. Uh, the thing about a, a city the size of Lakewood is that it's, um, and we're not. You know, two hundred thousand people and with, you know, so many police districts that we're not sure what's going on where. Or so many cops that you don't know what's going on where. Um, we are, are, uh, of a size that most officers know. No matter where you normally work, know what the general flavor is of every neighbor and what's going on. So as far as directing resources, um, it's, um. You know, it, there is some value to it, but it doesn't really help us too much with that. Where it does come in, as far as patrol, where it does come in handy, uh, like traffic enforcement. Um, where do we go and do an emphasis? Uh, we have somebody call in and say, people are racing up and down Phillips Road. Is that just one person who was mad at the kid next door with a loud muffler or is there really a problem? We go out and put a, um, a speed measuring device on the side of the road that measures traffic for a couple of days. And we see, yes, there really is a problem. So data mining like that, um, is absolutely helps us with, um, directing some resources. Oh, yes, yes, yes. Hi, having a couple of construction projects with detours gives us a place to work, I'll tell you that. Yeah, one hundred and twelfth by, uh, Lake Blue.
Took me a half an hour to get from Hutlock to Silicon Boulevard this morning. Does this traffic, the construction?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you folks are doing a lot of infrastructure work and that's one of the, the byproducts of it.
I, I had to practice what I preached.
A lot of the stuff that you guys, that council has talked about, I noticed if you go online and there's a police chief survey that's out. There's great things that are asked, like what are you looking for? Are you looking for the data-driven? Are you looking for someone who brings technology and innovation? So I would encourage you guys to all go take the survey and give your feedback and encourage others to do it too. Cause you touched on all the things, you know, and what we're looking for in a possible, in a new chief. So I think that that was just, it's a great, um, synergy. So take the survey.
So that is all I have for you, uh, unless, again, unless there's, uh, specific line item questions that, um. Uh, you know, it's a big pa- it's a big packet, I didn't come in planning to go through line by line.
Right, maybe just a, a high-level look at the service program changes for the two years might be helpful. We don't have to go through the detail per se, but I think we've, we've heard from the city manager, some of the increase in FTEs we're looking at.
Yes. Right. And that's, right, and that's, um, that's what we're gearing towards. Uh, the, uh, well, I should, I should mention too that there's a few red lines in there related to tasers. Uh, and one of the big things coming up is, uh, or that we're in the process in the midst of, is deployment of body worn cameras. That, and the whole package came with their next or newest generation of taser. So there's been, while, you know, our other generations were starting to reach end of life. We were funding, uh, or starting to fund, uh, replacements. And you'll see some, um, line-outs and some replacement with, with other, uh. And you'll see some line outs and some replacement with, with other, with the red numbers. As we. Get rid of what we had previously allocated or were planning on, because it was part of the taser package. And in addition to the, or the, the body worn camera package, the Axon package. So in addition to the body worn cameras and the tasers, we are also replacing our interview room cameras with Axon. So we'll also have cloud storage there for our, our interview rooms. And then they come with a transcription service as well, which will be very nice to be able to use that, right? We currently use that service in-house, we do provide that in-house. There's, you know, you see bike team equipment and a lot of training. And again, we are looking at, you know, a lot of new folks that need a lot of training. And one of the things I'll tell you about that as well is that when we talk to, interview officers who are applying to work for Lakewood. And they, we say, why do you want to work here? A lot of times they will point to not just the support that they receive from the community or what they hear from our department. But how much training that they hear about us providing. So training is a, it's, it's, it's valued by the people that are, that are coming to work here.
I heard anecdotally, one officer came from Tacoma. Did the thirty thousand dollar pay cut to come here because of the atmosphere, the training, you know, you name it.
Yes, that's. Part of the, of our, our gang of cockles. We have a, a family that's here with us, two came from Tacoma and one that we hired.
But what a wonderful affirmation, really.
Absolutely.
What the department is.
Well, it says a lot about, you know, for what culture can do for any organization.
Right.
You know, there comes a point where, you know, money only goes so far, right?
Absolutely, yeah. What page are you looking on there? Page, page eighty-one and you have rebound slash tactical athlete.
Yes.
And then immediately after that, move to risk management, so it's a negative, so it zeros out.
From our budget, so ready rebound and tactical athlete, it used to be called tactical athlete, they changed their name to ready rebound. And that is a program that is geared towards having people recover more quickly from injuries, so they can get back to work quicker. It was started, we just piloted it in the police department and it made sense. To expand it to some of our other city departments where they have field units, like the parks department and public works. You know, the more, some of the more physical jobs. So, once that, we made that decision, then it made more sense to put that under risk management as opposed to the police department.
Okay, so risk management pays for it because it cuts down on the disability? I think that's really innovative, that's a great.
Yeah, we just shifted it from police department budget to risk management and added other positions and other departments. And that's on page seventy-four, section seven.
So what about jail service, the same thing, it's seven hundred thousand? I'm on page eighty-one and then it's a negative one hundred thousand, so.
We just reduced the budget by one hundred thousand.
Okay, oh, because you just don't think they'll have as many people, okay.
It's not for lack of trying.
It's not for lack of, yeah. The other county still has restrictions, huh?
Yeah, and staffing problems.
Any questions on the detail, budget detail that the chief has led us through? It's like we can see it there.
You'll see one line item for ballistic plates and helmets and one other thing. That that's about, and it stems from an active shooter that officers responded to down in Woodbrook. A few months back where a guy with a rifle was up out on his apartment balcony or on his stoop. Just shooting randomly and started shooting at officers when they responded from. A hundred or more yards away, something like that. And these vests are good, the ballistic vests, but they, they're, they're not rated for rifle rounds. And helmets are also something that, you know, would be beneficial in a situation like that. And, you know, the, even the, the state patrol or in other agencies that they were showing up. They were throwing on these quick vests and helmets that'll, that have a, the helmets provide obviously protection for the head. But then the, the quick vests provide ballistic protection for rifle rings. So that's what that, and it's sort of, it's a big, bigger dollar item in seventy-nine thousand that will allow us to outfit quite a few patrol folks with those.
Do we, do we keep a few of these? Bulletproof vests kind of in reserve, so people going ride along, for instance, there's something available for them as they needed something?
Depends on who's riding.
Exactly, yeah, the paper thin versus the one with actual shields on it?
Yes, we do have some.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. You know, they're, they're looking pretty sketchy when we were looking for the one the other night, but it's like, eh, this one looks. Used together with duct tape, but hey, it'll work, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
One of the things we did do also is, is eliminated the count, the contract with Pierce County. There's, we are, are settling more into what SRT is and what they're going to be. You know, it's really, this is only the second. The second full biennium will be with SRT as our own.
Right.
Our own entity, our own team. So this is the first budget, the last budget, we kind of absorbed some, a lot of the costs in different areas. Here we call them out separately, just so that it's, it's clear where that's going. You'll see SRT training and equipment expenditures in there. And you'll also see the elimination of the contracted services of Pierce County Sheriff's Department. Because I, we had that as a sort of a backup. Should there be something go wrong with the formation of SRT, but that, things have gone well. So we are, I'm confident that we don't need that contract anymore.
Let me ask you this, I know the, the police tour on budget doesn't have a capital CIP program per se, right? But I ask because I heard a few questions raised about. The opportunity for expanded parking at the police station, maybe taking or buying or getting a leasehold interest on. Portion of the property to the, whether it's at the north or east, or whatever it is, into the industrial park. If that's a need, is that something we should think about addressing? The other capital piece is if the Bearcat needs to really have more effective overhead coverage or enclosure. To protect it from inclement weather, so we don't run a foul, a foul weather. To the point where it creates increased maintenance costs for the vehicle, is that something we should be looking at?
I believe that where, I'll, I'll work backwards, the armored vehicle and the other specialty vehicles we have. I think there's, there's enough protection where they're at. And one of the things with armored vehicles is you have to be careful with UV light.
Right.
On the glass.
Windows.
And it is, the, the shed that it's parked in faces north. So it will never be in direct sunlight just while it's parked there. If there does come a time where we need to look at increased protection for them from the elements. You know, we could do something in the way of doors or curtains or something on the front of those. As far as parking, it's tight.
Right.
You know, especially on overlap training days like today, I mean, there was not much extra parking. And we do like to host classes as well, so we run into parking issues there. The, our, our partners, the industrial park, have been very patient, very generous with us when we do that. When we have overflow parking going across the, the street there into other business areas.
Right, I just wondered if there's even been any inquiry on the fencing, right? Behind where you guys park.
Where those semis are backed up to.
Yeah, whether there's some opportunity to acquire just a small portion to get you twenty vehicle spots.
Maybe, I don't know if that'll quite guess twenty vehicle spots.
Okay.
There's not, there's not a ton there, there, it might be worth inquiring. But the, I, it would be a lot of money and a lot of work and I don't know if the bang would be worth a buck.
Got it, okay. Can I just throw it out there for?
But parking does get tight, so.
Especially got the impound vehicles back there too and. There's a couple that I saw that might be of use in my household, so, you know, want to sell something cheap, let me know.
We'll clean it out first. And those are really the, the, sort of the bigger. Dollar highlights of the budget. Again, I'd be happy if, if anybody saw anything in there, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Those are the only two questions that I had, you know, in addition to just as Mr. Boke indicated and the kind of global conversation about. Making sure down the road, we're deploying the resources in the most effective manner and it sounds like we are for what we know today, right? Any questions, Mr. Branser? Is Bill? Mr. Boke? Did you want a monogrammed patrol bike?
You can get a tricycle.
Yeah, exactly. Well, we appreciate it and again, thanks for all you are doing and continue to do. And I'm gonna schedule another ride along probably this next month with you, so.
Yeah.
With the group, I, I really enjoyed it and I, I think it's a value to do for me, I'm gonna try to do one once a month and once every other month.
I will tell all of you that it does make a difference, the officers do enjoy, you know, having you come out. They, they like being able to bend your ear once in a while.
Yep.
And just so you're not strangers. And I think it's, it's eye-opening for you all to come out and, and just kind of see when I describe something. That's going on out there, you can see it firsthand and know what, what I'm, I'm referring to, so I think it's helpful.
Well, maybe, that may be more than they want to see me, but yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, once every two months or once every quarter or something like that.
Every couple of months, maybe, you know, even twice a year, I think would be, would be good.
It's really informative, I think, and they may get tired of seeing us, but I, you know, it's really an informative thing, cause you see. The variety of encounters. From, like I mentioned the last time, from Bill family home in Oakbrook to a domestic violence call to, you know, shots fired call to an alue. To, you know, a theft, a retail theft, I mean, it's interesting. The scope and swath of stuff that these people have to deal with, with their skillset. That has to flex differently with each encounter, very interesting.
And on a dime.
And on a dime.
That is, for me, that's one of the biggest parts, the skills that the people that do this job well have. Is being able to go to that wide range of calls and change their approach and their, their mindset just on a dime. And then change back, you know, the very next call.
But I have to say, in the ride-alongs that I've been on, in each time. A very steady, consistent level of professional approach to each of the different kinds of calls. And I really appreciated that.
Okay, yeah, all right.
We should say thank you, Chief Serrano, this is your last budget hearing, so thank you very much.
Thank you, yeah.
Best wishes on every time.
Thank you, I appreciate that, I appreciate this amount, but.
I'm not willing, I'm not willing to let him go, but apparently, yeah, you are, yeah.
And I do apologize for the city attorney.
Yeah.
That's because I, on the other hand, have three girls who are still in high school.
Right.
I will not be retiring anytime soon.
Yeah, exactly, I, I feel your pain, I still have one too, yeah.
All right, so you are in Home Stretch, the legal department, part of the operating budget.
Where the rubber meets the road.
Section three. Well, I will tell you.
Which page in section three here?
Let's see, I have my regular notes in front of me. Yeah, I have it as correct, one forty-five. So I am the city attorney, as you know, and my responsibilities here include the office of the city clerk, the human resources department. The prosecution function and general legal services for the city. I will tell you as a predicate to this tonight, that should help a little bit with time. You're getting a report from the city prosecutor on November seventeenth. So you're welcome to ask me questions and plum the depth of my antiquated knowledge of prosecution. Or you can hold some of that back for our prosecutor and we're aware that you are increasingly interested in what happens to cases after the arrest.
Right.
So that might be a good opportunity for that. And if you have questions in advance, let the city manager know and we'd be happy to follow up and make sure that that's a productive meeting for you.
That's a great heads up, so we can perhaps lay aside a half hour to an hour of questioning in that area for tonight.
So I'm gonna start with what our accomplishments are. You may be aware that several years ago, we were contract prosecuting and we have made a full transition to a regular in-house prosecution team. Including a lead prosecutor in-house and two sort of entry-level prosecutors who are in court regularly. Another area where we've been very successful is negotiating labor contracts on behalf of the city. And we did the Lakewood Police Independent Guild as well as ASME and Teamsters during this past budget cycle. And we think that that's important, not only from a budgetary perspective, but also the labor relations piece. It's beneficial to come to an agreement where everybody walks away feeling like, maybe they didn't get everything they wanted, but they got a decent deal. And then we have good working relationships and we've been very successful with that. We've also, and I, I think this is worth mention, is that every year, and it's our human resources department that gets full credit for this. They go through all of the hoops that get us a two percent savings on our AWC charge. And that involves a lot more work than you'd think, but they're very good about getting all the employees involved and putting on the events that get us that savings. We are actively working and in the last reporting period, we did a workforce CEO utilization to identify the underrepresented categories. And we have some things coming up that are going to try and capitalize on some of that. The part of COVID lockdown that really impacted our department had to do with. The fact that suddenly everybody realized that they could telework, they had to telework, right? So then the question became, now that we're not under the lock and the lockdown, do we want to telework and what does that look like? So there was a lot of extra training that went into our organization and a lot of discussions between supervisors and employees. And a lot of discussion about what it's like to be a supervisor. When two years ago, if you were a supervisor, you could tell if everybody was working by looking around the cubicles. Now you've got to try a whole different way of reaching out and figuring out what's going on. And that really put an extra weight onto particularly the human resources department. The other thing that exclusively fell to Kat St. Pierre, who you may know, she's in the human resources department. She was responsible, if she got a call that somebody had COVID, okay, what floor were you on? What offices did you visit? Where are the sign-in sheets, all of the contract, contact tracing? And for a lot of us, when that lifted, Kat was still getting calls about people with cases of COVID. And the rules were changing about who you had to notify, so all of that comes through our department. We've reached out to diversity organizations with job postings and we've worked with hiring supervisors to incorporate diversity considerations. Trying to diversify some of our selection panels. And the big one for a lot of people is that we converted to the PERS retirement system. And that involved coordination, not only with the state department retirement system, it also required coordination with Mission Square. That currently handles our free PERS. And they will keep handling some of our stuff, although we have the rest of our stuff with the Department of Retirement Systems. And that is an ongoing transition and lots of questions, not just from current employees, but from former employees. So taking us into twenty-three, twenty-four, we are working on implementing a document management system to include, not just, you know. Your document management, you think, well, we're gonna scan a bunch of documents in and call ourselves done. This actually takes us into like the next place and it dovetails with this sort of telework question. We are trying to implement workflow through the digital processes as much as possible. So that it's not just a matter of, well, there's something that used to be on paper and now it's on a computer. It's now the whole workflow goes through the digital process. And all of our departments are very amenable to that. A human resources is a very document-intensive department, clerk's office is a very document-intensive department. And lawyers also know how to produce a lot of documents, so to the degree that those can be systematized, we're going to be working hard on that. We are going to be completing negotiations and implementing the Lakewood Police Independent Guild. And if you heard me just say that on the last round, that's because we're at it. and um if you heard me just say that on the last round, that's because we're at it again, and also the Lakewood uh Police Management Guild collective bargaining agreements. Um, there are a couple other things mentioned. I'm gonna skip down to the Well City Award again, because it's important to the city that we save that two percent. And then I'm skipping down to close to the bottom, where I say we're reaching out to diversity organizations again with all job postings and attend local diversity job fairs and other outreach opportunities. We are increasingly of the mind that it's not enough to post something and hope for all the right people to apply. We are now aware that you really have to do outreach. And at this point, we really need to do outreach just to get applicants, because the employee pools are drying up a little bit. We we are getting good applications, but not the way we did in previous years, and we're hearing that across the board in different jurisdictions. It's just the nature of the current economy. So um, looking at our performance measures on page one forty-eight, um, you'll notice that with the contracts, reviewing contracts, we we had a little uptick in the time it takes us to review. Our number of contracts dramatically increased with the review of the ARPA contracts. And so we did have more contracts going through, and we were monitoring whether or not we got to a point where it was just too much. Then you can see some of our other measures, uh how long it takes a prosecutor to um charge something, how long it takes that charging decision to then go into municipal court. Um, some informational numbers. Uh, one thing I wanted to point out about the number of criminal citations filed is that uh you look at those numbers uh in quarter one, six twenty, and in quarter two, eight hundred and twelve. That breaks down to closer to the twenty-twenty and twenty-nineteen numbers. It's right in that ballpark as far as a per month, if you average it out. So um we're kind of holding steady on what's going through our court. And then you can see some of the um informational measures coming from our uh human resources department as well. And I'm going to skip through the primary alignment pages and go down to page one fifty-one, because that's kind of where the rubber meets the road as far as where your resources are going. We are asking to restore, well, we're recommending to restore uh Domestic Violence Office Assistant to full-time. We had a vacancy at the time we were all going into the COVID lockdown, and so we took away the general fund funding for that position, and that left it at a halftime that was entirely grant-funded. We are asking now to restore it, and, you know, sometimes you think, well, if we were able to do it with halftime, why why wouldn't you keep doing it with halftime? In the past several months, legislation took effect. It had been passed in the last legislative session that now requires the prosecutor's office specifically to make repeated contacts with victims throughout the prosecution process. It's um targeted to do certain contacts at every single stage of the process, and that's a little more than we had been doing. We've gone from about two to three contacts per case upwards of more like five to seven times throughout the life of the case, and that's that's legislated. We have to let the victims know what's going on, and that's it's a fair thing to do. What we had been doing is a lot more collaboration with the Crystal Judson Center and the YWCA, because our feeling was that that kind of care for a victim is not really the role of the prosecutor. Our role is to get the guy who did it, right? Um, their role is to make sure that the victim's safe and getting the services that they need. Um, this legislation was specifically targeted at kind of holding the hand of the victim through specifically the criminal justice process. So we feel that um taking it back up to the one FTE, we should be able to do that. And um outside legal counsel, that's um it's just a way of budgeting it so that the cost of outside counsel is put where it's most appropriate, and that is adjacent to the projects that are generating the legal work. The next two sections are about redaction software. Redaction software for the video and audio is hoping to try and keep uh things very efficient with body-worn cameras uh to go through by hand and do all of the redaction necessary before you can disclose something under public disclosure is very tedious. So we're trying to get the best redaction software we can get and keep things moving quickly. The redaction software for documents is um it's one of those things, Next Request, which is our really good public disclosure system. They gave us a free sample of their redaction software, and the people who do all of our redactions said this is really helpful. It cuts down hours of time. Well, that's what they do with that free sample, you know, and then it turns out that it's not actually free, right? So now we're looking for funding for that. Um, election costs are a fact of life for us. Um, we reassess those costs. There's not much we can get around uh it with.
Is that based on kind of an anticipated um voter turnout in the city, or is that a per capita?
Yeah, based on history, looking and then looking forward, correct, Madam City Clerk? Yeah, that's correct.
Mr. Branser?
I I guess I understand election costs on, but typically the city is on a cycle where almost all the elections that we're responsible for take place in odd number of years. You know, and so, I mean, what what would be a reason to need more money in twenty-twenty-four?
It's when you have a primary election that will cost you more. So.
So I understand we're gonna go through city elections in twenty-twenty-three, both primary and general. In twenty-twenty-four, what elections would the city be funding?
Some of it's the anticipated elections. I can tell you, there's also always the potential if somebody decided to run initiative referendum, if one of the other places decided to run a bond initiative or whatever have you. It's not exclusive to just a candidate running for office. And yes, we have been hit with some heavy election costs in the past. I'm not sure about what years people can do what, but it would be yeah, it would be unwise of us to leave it empty.
Seems like two thousand and nine or ten is the last time we had an election of that sorts.
Right.
When there was uh, oh, there was one about gambling. Again, um, yeah, yeah, over ten years ago, yeah, gambling going to.
And then the employee recognition event, we didn't have a lot. We, I I have to say, um, human resources and um city leadership did an exceptional job of of trying the Zoom meetings to to keep people going during the lockdown. But now that we are done with that, we're going to have a couple of regular recognition events, which we've we've done over the years. And I'm gonna skip the Ready Rebound program, because the chief talked about that. It's being moved to our department because to the human resources department, because we're expanding it to citywide. And so it was with police before, because it was exclusively police. So um I would be happy to try and answer any questions, although you might get an answer from me if you ask about prosecution, that you're gonna hear an answer on November seventeenth.
Yeah, I I did have one question about the Domestic Violence Office Assistant.
Yes.
Uh, and I understood your explanation that uh essentially they have legislation that we're not going to be able to I mean, there's 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 real work that has to be done, and it's and it's increasing. Why is that position identified as a limited turn position with an end date at the end of twenty-twenty-four? If there's not any potential for not needing it ongoing?
I think one of the um things that we are trying to do as a department is to always be kind of looking at the most efficient way to deliver services. So it may be that that work gets shifted in another way. What if um stop-grant money became more abundant? If stop-grant money became more abundant, and we could move it all onto the grant, we would not be asking for general fund funding. So um it's just in an abundance of caution that if the worst happened in terms of the economy, we have some positions that are identified as potential for either a cut or a change in uh in the way that it's done. And the employees are aware of when they are in a a term-limited position, and some of the positions are renewed on a regular basis. But the other thing I would say about this position is because of the nature of the stop grant, this has always been a term-limited position. If the stop grant goes away, the position could potentially go away, and that would, you're correct, leave us struggling with the idea of how to comply with the new law. But we have always perceived this as as a less solid position because of the way that it's funded.
I remember two years ago, if we were going through this process, and then the position was changed to where it was only funded with the hours that the grant would support.
Correct.
To be able to go and do that. But with the change in legislation that you said, that even if the grant goes away, we will still have to do a significant portion of this work, and quite frankly, it's it's an area of of public safety in the community that I think that we we kind of want to do that, so. So so we, it appears that the grant is good for the both years of the biennium.
We are assuming that. We we reapply for that grant every single year.
Okay, so 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 that we're we're good for this biennium, but when we, on the front page where you look at your department, that FTE doesn't count. It isn't included in your FTE count for your department.
I would have to go back and check my notes. That's the other accounts.
First page over there, it's it's uh, it's uh
Not.
Going on. Okay, this uh, and is there a budget to train the the person? This person, if it's a position that turns over a lot, because it's.
This person does receive training. Um, I do want to be clear about something. The responsibility provided by the legislature, it is not specific about who within the office provides that contact, and it would be a real stretch for us, but if it came down to it, and we had to reduce ourselves to two lawyers and a city clerk, it would be um, it would be the lawyers that would have to make that contact. And that would really change the way we do things, but the point is, if you put a term limit on that particular OA, that you're right, that doesn't change the obligation, but it's not an obligation to one particular employee. It's an obligation on the city's prosecution.
Well, I guess I understand that, although it sounds like you can do it well enough to check the box, or you can do it well to provide, to to actually serve the people that it's intended to help.
Correct.
Hey. I had a question about um risk management. I see under page one fifty-four, and then I'm looking at one sixty-five. The fairly hefty increase in the internal service expenditure for risk management. It's like nineteen point six percent increase. And then I'm looking at page one sixty-five. Looks like similar increases in insurance assessments. I thought we were doing better. What's going on there?
We are doing reasonably well. The world is not doing well. That's really the story on that. I I'm sorry to be, you know, sort of flip about it, but that's one of the things that we're being told is that it's becoming increasingly challenging for our pool to find excess carrier.
Okay.
And things of that nature, and that is not because of something the city of Lakewood has done. In fact, the city has been phenomenal at um improving its its standing with uh the risk management situation. But there are forces beyond our control, and we don't know what's around the next corner with regard to that.
Ms. Kraus, did you have a add-on to that besides four hundred and thirty-three thousand?
So the other day, the city manager said there's a lot of information out there, so I pulled it up because I wrote it. So during the mid-biennium budget adjustment, we also had to ask for some increases for the risk assessment, and that's our WCA. And the overall, just WCA has experienced a liability rate increase um driven by insurance markets in Washington State. The other factors affecting the insurance market include large jury awards, changes in state laws, and the social justice movement and changing conditions in the insurance market worldwide. So that's what's.
Wasn't just us individually.
We actually.
Because we're part of the pool, right?
Yeah, we did well, but just these other factors are.
There are, yeah, there are some excess carriers that are not even doing Washington anymore.
Got it. Well, up above in the number, and all you have a question, Mr. Branser, but it says total revenues. I wasn't sure if this is a typo, twenty-twenty-four proposed. The bottom blue line was six point four million, but I didn't see where that number was derived.
Uh, I'm sorry, which page are you on?
One sixty-five.
On one sixty-five.
Says twenty-twenty-four proposed, has a total revenue line in blue, and it, you know, goes from twenty-twenty-three to from two point four million, and then jumps in twenty-twenty-four to six point four million.
And that's a typo.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Yep. I was hopeful that we'd get some revenue. I was gonna make up for the increase.
The revenues to this fund would just come from other funds. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Solve my problem with water features. I get no humor out of these people at nine thirty at night. That was all the questions I had. Mr. Branser, did you have one? That's one, yeah, but yeah, interesting how we got the risk assessment increase, even though we're doing relatively.
I I also do want to add that, you know, we're paying for these um assessments, but there's a lot that we get back in return. So they provide our pre-defense. They they are there for us.
I understand, so. Very good. Any other questions? Did you have any more, Ms. Lockter?
No, the only thing tagging on to what the deputy manager said was that during the COVID um times, there was a lot of training brought forward by WCIA to tell us how to comply with all the different things that were coming at the city, and it was extremely helpful.
So just on the uncovered potential risk liabilities of the public records work, so are there any sort of improvements uh in the budget for the next biennium that might help us ensure that we?
There's there's hope that the document management um piece will be helpful to us. I will tell you that the biggest threat right now is probably the higher courts. Um, there was a case out of Yakima that um went after the Yakima School District, for, among other things, whether or not the IT department had received public records training. And that was one of the specific things that they called out, and I think it is an increasing challenge for um any agency to try and keep up with this sort of um unspoken standard that's being handed down case by case. Um, and so we're doing what we can to do the internal education and try and keep everybody on the same page, but it is a never-ending battle.
And it's a dance to try to figure out whether it's the next.
Correct.
Sword that will fall, right?
Correct.
Well, very good. Well, thank you very much for the overview and presentation. This concludes the proposed biennial budget adjustment or department presentations for tonight. Uh, unless Mr. Coughfield has any final comments or any.